Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the closed session of the Hermosa Beach School Board for December 11th, 2019. Calling the closed session order. Michelle, will you please take the role?
Maggie Bovill-Lamonica.
Present.
Jennifer Cole.
Present.
Doug Gardner.
Present.
Stephen McCall.
Present.
And Barbara Zanderos.
Present.
All present.
Thank you. Next, we will have oral communications from the audience to the board. Seeing nobody here, we will close oral communications and adjourn to closed session. Thank you. Open session, regular meeting of the Hermosa Beach School Board for December 11th, 2019. There is nothing to report out of closed session. I will call the open session to order for the evening. Michelle, will you please take the role?
Maggie Bovill-Lamonica.
Present.
Jen Cole.
Present.
Doug Gardner.
Present.
Stephen McCall.
Present.
And Barbara Zanderos.
Present.
All present.
Thank you. Everyone would please rise for the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We wanted to start the meeting with a moment of silence for the victims of the Saugus High School shooting last month. Thank you. With that, we'll move on to the very poor segue, the approval of tonight's agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda? Does it move? Thank you, Stephen. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Maggie. All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. The agenda is approved. We will now move on to announcements. Superintendent?
Thank you. I'd like to call up our student council members, representatives. We've got a different range of kids here. Let's see. I know we've got middle school and we've got third grade, fourth grade, and is, are the View kids here tonight? Okay, alright, good. Alright, so let's let the fourth graders go first and then they can build the suspense for what's going on at middle school. Hi, girls. Welcome.
Welcome, girls.
Do you want to pull down that microphone a little bit? There you go.
There you go.
Thank you.
Hi, we are Ela and Ellie from the Elementary Student Council. The Adopt a Family Service Project is in full swing. This, each fifth grade class, the sixth grade class as a whole, and our startership class have all adopted a family from Inglewood that is low-income, are struggling due to illness, injury, single-parent ETC. Students and families are bringing in items that they need such as jackets, shoes, blankets, or food to help them out and give them a good holiday season.
In music, the fourth and fifth graders will be doing a winter performance led by Mr. Harrison on Thursday, December 19th. The fourth grade classes will perform at 9:15 while the fifth grade classes will perform at 10:15. We'll be using our recorders, our body, as percussions in singing. We would love to have you there. Valley just finished our scholastic book fair. It was great having it earlier in the year as we saw many students and parents buying books for holiday gifts. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Molly Trotter. I'm the secretary for Middle School Student Council.
And I'm Sophia Lucky and I'm the seventh grade vice president for Hermosa Valley Student Council.
Winter sports season is here. Trialts are finished and practices have begun. Our athletes are preparing for their first game against Ridgecrest on Tuesday, January 7th. We hope to see everyone there cheering on the girls and boys soccer and basketball. Last Friday, we had our first middle school dance of the year. The theme was "Blast From the Past." Students dressed up as their favorite decades attire and enjoyed dancing to a DJ and, of course, the delicious In-N-Out truck. We look forward to the dance next in the spring. Today, the eighth graders left from their outdoor education trip at Camp Valley. We look forward to their return on Friday and hearing all about their trip.
Adopt a family has begun for elementary and sixth graders. Each class has adopted a family in need for the holidays and are asked to bring unwrapped items to their classes by Monday, December 16th. Students are welcome to help wrap and deliver items to the families. We look forward to helping those who are in need and be able to bring them some cheer this holiday season. Winter break will begin soon and we are excited to spend the time with friends and family. There will be a half-day next Friday, December 20th, and school will resume on Monday, January 6th. We hope everyone has a wonderful break.
Thank you.
And as always, I want to recognize Monique Gonzalez, who's a middle school teacher over at Valley, who is the advisor for student council, and we really, really appreciate your commitment to this, Monique. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you to all of our student presenters. It's always a great pleasure to hear the latest updates from all of you. So with that, we will move on to oral communications from the audience to the board. Members of the audience may address the board on any topic regardless of whether it's listed on the agenda. However, the board may not discuss issues raised that are not listed on the agenda. Topics not on the agenda that are brought to the board's attention may be investigated by the administration in a report made to the board, either publicly or privately at a future meeting. Complaints regarding district employees must be dealt with in closed session, not in public. Comments from visitors shall not exceed three minutes unless waived by a majority of all members of the board. Is there any public comment? Alright, seeing none, we will close public comment and move on to written communications. Do we have any written communications? Barb, anything?
I have none.
Thank you. Stephen?
I received one from a community member about the credentialing. I think we all received the same notification there.
Thank you. Jen?
Yep, same. I received an email and communication from Regina Hoffman regarding the uniform complaint and an email communication from Howard Longanker regarding city issues.
Thank you. Maggie?
Yes, I received a communication regarding North School construction.
Thank you. Yeah, I think everyone received the communication regarding the uniform complaint. And then I also received, I think we all did, about the Valley Holiday Band music concerts as well. With that, we will move on to superintendent update. Superintendent?
Thank you very much. I'm happy to report that our enrollment is now at 1,363 students. That's an increase of 17 students since the conclusion of last school year, so we're thrilled to have new families into our community and students at our school, so that's a lot to look forward to and we're really happy that they're here. Thirteen sixty-three. Up from thirteen forty-six. The other thing is we still have a vacancy for the Citizens Oversight Committee, which is the Measure S Oversight Financial Group. And we sent out an announcement, and we also announced it at the meeting, that the vacancy was available. It is earmarked, or it's restricted. It has to be a parent who has a child currently enrolled in the school district. That's the category. And so we're going to extend the deadline. We didn't receive any applications and so we will extend, and I think it got lost a little bit in the holidays, so the next COC meeting is in January, January 8th, which we will be able to have the meeting with that vacancy still in place. But after that meeting, we will go ahead and re-circulate all of the opportunities, deadlines, and applications for the COC. This time, we will target specifically through our mass email system, our school messenger system, specifically to parents with children who are in the school district, since that is a restricted category. So if you're at all interested, it's a great group. It's really interesting and you'll know a lot about the process for building schools. The other thing is that the state superintendent, after our last meeting, the state superintendent sent a letter out to superintendents about safe storage of firearms and school safety and security. And what he says is that because of the recent spate of shooting sprees and deadly violence around the nation has shocked and saddened us and dramatically increased our need to be vigilant and proactive with safety measures at all times. District and school administrators must help educate parents and guardians about California's child access prevention laws. It is a crime for a person to negligently store or leave a loaded firearm in a place where a child is likely to access it. So the letter goes on to talk about how schools alone cannot prevent incidences of government violence. The California Department of Education is dedicated to making our schools as safe as possible and it is the responsibility of parents, guardians, and household members to store firearms according to the California law. There are tips and information about firearm safety, including rules for kids that can be accessed at the State of California Department of Justice Firearms Safety website. We will link those on our, post those on our website so that people can retrieve the links. And there's a Violence Prevention webpage at CDE, which is the California Department of Education. We want to work with our community and with the board to help parents, guardians, and families know of their legal responsibilities and to achieve those legal responsibilities. The Manhattan Beach School District tonight is considering a resolution that is, was formatted off of the LAUSD Resolution regarding school safety and firearm storage. And so the superintendent, Dr. Matthews, is going to let me know if the board approved that. And there's a group of superintendents in South Bay area who are interested in using the same resolution so that there's a continuity of support from our local area. So I will bring that to you in January for your consideration. And it's just the number-one thing that we need to ask before you take your child on a playdate regardless of where they're going. If there are weapons in the home, and if there are, are they secured? You'll sleep better, they'll sleep better, and it really will help us all. Just a quick update on the MOU NTMP Stakeholder Group, which is created part of the Measure S Environmental Impact Report. This is our partnership with the city. We had a terrific meeting last Tuesday night, not yesterday, but a week ago Tuesday, with the community who came out and had an opportunity to voice their interests about some ideas that have surfaced over the last couple of months from other stakeholder meetings and we are working to consolidate the ideas that have shown the most interest into a draft plan. And we are on target in terms of our timeline. So Monday night, we are having a meeting with the stakeholders again, the 12 stakeholders. In January, we are hoping to release a draft plan. In February, that plan will have been circulated to all of the elected officials in the city. We'll have a joint study session to discuss it publicly. And then on March 10th and March 11th, it'll be agendized for city council adoption and school board adoption. So we are moving along. There was a very nice article in the news, in the Easy Reader by Ryan McDonald about the process. If anyone has any questions, please feel free to contact me or Leanne Singleton over at the city. And we are moving onward. And that's it from me, unless you have any questions.
Are there any questions for the superintendent? Good. I do have questions. Sorry.
Pat, last time, this is just going back to the last meeting, you had pulled the minutes from the last meeting and there was a correction you wanted to potentially make?
I did, and let me identify that for you, if I can find the minutes. In the minute zone. Got it. It's on, this is, thank you very much. This was the minutes from October. Page two, under Communications, at the bottom of the page, in the superintendent update. It states Superintendent Escalante reported on the credential misassignment from the 2017-18 school year. Commented on the timeline for the uniform complaint procedure, that no official documents were received by the school district from the California Commission on Teacher Credentialing regarding the misassignment. However, the district requested an official statement from the Los Angeles County Office of Education, LACO. And the superintendent said that the misassignment ended at the close of the 2017-18 school year. I would like to add to the minutes that, this sentence. The LACO identified a misassignment and it would be reported to the California Commission on Teacher Credentialing. That piece of information wasn't included.
Thank you.
Good. Alright, listen. Question? Stephen?
Thank you, Pat, for the updates on things. For the MOU NTMP, the acronym. Did I get it?
You got it.
Can I just clarify that the circulation in January, would that be, that's to the public? There's a review, it's sort of circulated prior and so it will be, you said a draft will be in January, and I was just looking back at the original timelines and it mentioned when things will get circulated. Do you, you may not have those dates yet, but...
Between January and February, the, there'll be a working draft. It's a working product. So that will be circulated to all of the different elected officials in-house for your review. And then once any feedback is received or corrections or whatever, then we will update the plan. And then it will be attached to the agenda when the joint meeting is agendized, so that the public can review it. And you'll review it publicly with the public.
And the city council.
And there will be a joint meeting for that review.
Joint meeting.
Go ahead.
And there will be an opportunity for public comment at that meeting as well.
Great. Thank you very much. That was it.
Good. Barb? Alright, excellent. Thank you. With that, we will move on to board action. And in the board actions section, we will start with the annual organizational meeting section. But before we get to the nuts and bolts of the organizational meeting, I wanted to take a few minutes to reflect on the year that has been, my year in the center chair here. The year that just passed and the district's many, many accomplishments during that year. I feel that it was quite a year of progress and achievement for the district. We built on the accomplishments of the past boards and the board presidents stand on the shoulders of giants a little bit with that, but we really moved things forward, all of us up here. The administration sitting down here as one big team effort. I believe that we've set the district up for great success going forward. I was going back last night through kind of everything that we've accomplished and it kind of even amazed me of what we got through this year for the group that's up here and down here. You know, we are such a small district, but it's kind of incredible what we're able to accomplish. So as part of this, I thought I would just take a moment and kind of go through the highlights month by month, because I couldn't think of a better way to do it. And it really, as I said, going through all the things, there was something kind of really a great achievement every month. There wasn't, there wasn't a month where I struggled to pick something to talk about, so I was kind of like, alright, let's just go through it. Because it really was, you know, great success and great achievement, so please bear with me. So going back to January of this year, so January 2019, we approved the EIR for North School after a couple of years of going back and forth and, you know, recirculation and all that. It was finally approved, a unanimous vote by the board, really setting us forward for the year that would come with our Measure S Facilities Program. Then in February, we had a great honor where Hermosa Valley School was named a 2019 Distinguished School, which was really incredible honor to have received. It was a great honor for that and we also got through, it is what it is, but the totally agreement with the City of Hermosa Beach, the MOU with the City of Hermosa Beach. I think most of us probably tried to forget those times and all the special meetings and the closed sessions that we had to have during that period, but we survived. We got through it, you know, and here we are moving forward through that. In March, our superintendent was named the ACSA Region 14 2019 Superintendent of the Year, which was a tremendous achievement for her and for the district as a whole as part of that. And, you know, as addition to that, we up here, we expanded the EDP program to bring it down to Valley, which I know I take advantage of and a lot of parents were asking about, as well as to bring EDP to the mornings at View as well and really serve our working parents for what we need to do, so I thought that was really special. Moving on to April, we, Hermosa Valley School was named a 2019 Exemplary School Program Award in Physical Education and Nutrition from the State of California. And the district was named by the state superintendent as a 2019 California Green Ribbon Silver Award as well. We just knocked out the awards like month after month, beginning of this year, which is just really, really special. And as part of, in April as well, we created the new position and did a, the Director of Administrative Services and reorganized our district office, which is, I think, has been a really good success and Kim is doing a tremendous job, so thank you in that role. In May, we hired, one of them is sitting in the back, Erickson Hall. Big step in our contractor and our Measure S to have a contractor on board, ready to move forward. And we also approved the lighting summer project, so this year, to which it was obviously completed over the summer to move that piece forward as well. In June, we hired Farron Pierce for our MTMP that the superintendent spoke about, where we are in that process as well. July, we've got Coastal Commission approval, kind of the final governmental permit approval, I don't know quite what the right words are, to build North School. That kind of final go-ahead from all the powers that be, I guess, for lack of a better way to do it. And we welcomed Barb to our team up here in July, all on the same day. That was quite a day. That was all in one day. That was quite the day, quite the day. In August, we approved the GMP for North School, officially moving North School into approval and construction would come two months later. In September, we authorized the sale of the bonds for the Series B bonds, the next set of bonds. And we formed the NTMP Stakeholder Group, our 12 stakeholders who have been meeting and being such great contributors to that process. In October, we did break ground. Shovels in the dirt at North School after many, many, many years of waiting for that. That finally happened in October. We gave direction to the administration on both the plans for the transition when View School is closed as well as the recommended bell schedule. That was all in like a two-week period as well. Then in November, we started the discussion that will continue tonight around View School and how to move forward with that. So as I said, there was something every month, a series of great accomplishments for the district, the board, the administration and everyone. I want to thank everyone for all the hard work over this year, because without everyone's hard work and the great team effort and the great team of everybody pulling together, none of this would have been possible, so I thank everyone, the administration, district administration, fellow board members, school site staff, and everyone for everything over the past year, and I look forward to the year ahead. I know that it's going to be another tremendous year here, so it'll be great. And so with that, we will now, I appreciate your patience with me and letting me go on my spiel. We'll move over, move on to the annual organizational...
Can we give you some kudos?
Of course.
You want to wait for that? Okay, we got kudos for it.
Okay. Alright, so with that, we will start the annual organizational meeting section with the affirmation of review, affirmation of review roles of board members, government standards, and conflicts of interest. Superintendent, is there anything to speak about or are we just motioning?
I would go for a motion.
Okay, is there a motion to for the affirmation?
I move to approve the affirmation.
Thank you, Barb. Is there a second?
I second.
Thank you, Jen. All in favor? Aye. Alright, motion carries for affirmation of review roles of board members, government standards slash conflicts of interest. Moving on to B, the selection of officers. President and clerk, new president, the new president and the clerk. We will start with the clerk. Is there a motion on the clerk?
I would like to move that Stephen is the new clerk for the board.
Thank you, Jen. Is there a second?
I second.
Thank you, Maggie. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Congratulations. Welcome to being the clerk. And then the president, is there a motion in regards to the president?
I move to nominate Jen Cole as president.
Thank you, Maggie. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Barb. All in favor? Aye. Welcome.
Thank you.
The annual moving of the chairs.
Alright, you ready?
Go for it.
Alright. Good evening, everyone. I want to take this time to, since I have both Doug and Maggie on the board and they've both been board presidents, and I'm not sure we've ever had a chance to thank both of them at the same time. I wanted to include Maggie in this comment as well. So I want to take this time to thank Doug and Maggie for their board stewardship. It's hard to look at both of you at the same time, but over the past two years that I've been on the board, with four new board members in two years, there's been a tremendous amount of institutional knowledge that you've shared to get this board up to speed and moving together as a governing body to make decisions that affect the lives of students. And under Doug and Maggie, we have seen a growing list of amazing accomplishments, awards, and opportunities, as Doug spoke of tonight, for the Hermosa Beach City School District, helping us set a direction for the future of the district that we can all be proud of. So, thank you. And Doug and Maggie have led us through the process that's helped us get to, as Doug mentioned also, but to the groundbreaking to the breaking of ground on the Measure S Modernization Project and creating a strong relationship with the City of Hermosa Beach and building back relationships with community stakeholders. I'm proud of their service, grateful and appreciative of their time leading the board, and really thankful that we all get to continue to serve with both of you. Hermosa is small but mighty, full of progressive, smart, and hard-working people and families, and we have you both to thank for a responsible governance structure set up to help guide the district forward. So, thank you. I take the mantle tonight with big shoes to fill. I'd like to remind people that the board is in the business of serving students. We can't act alone in our decision-making and as a board and district, we want to model the love, kindness, empathy, and respect we want to see in our children and community. I'd like to see adding depth and meaning to the Thrive K to Life Board mission by supporting a safe and secure school environment, finding alignment of the board priorities in the coming month and again over the summer, strengthening and providing more support for our students in the social and emotional learning programs, enriching our science and STEAM programs, providing stability within the district as we go through a period of movement and change, and keeping Measure S on time, budget, and the community well-informed, and guiding our board by asking us to bring ourselves back to the guiding question, is this board action or direction best for students and their futures? My intent as the board president will be to guide by leading with listening, love, kindness, and appreciation for the hard work it takes to be a student in 2020, a parent in 2020, and a person working in schools in America in 2020. I'll do my best to shepherd the district with our current Thrive K Life mission and vision and continue to fine-tune our focus in 2020. I appreciate this responsibility to serve and thank you for trusting me with... So we'll move on to establishing the date and time of our regular meetings. And do I have a motion to approve an established date and time of regular meetings? Do I need to read them? Second Tuesday of every month? Second Wednesday of every month?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. An established date and time is approved. Next, we move to authorizing the superintendent as executive secretary to the board. Do I have a motion to approve authorizing superintendent, the superintendent as executive secretary to the board?
So moved.
Thank you, Doug. Is there a second?
Second.
Stephen, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Superintendent as, is the executive secretary to the board is approved. Next, we'll adopt resolution number eight, nineteen slash twenty, authorized signature resolution. Do I have a motion to approve the adopt, to adopt, to approve the adoption of the resolution oh eight nineteen slash twenty authorized signature resolution?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. For the resolution oh eight nineteen slash twenty, the authorized signature resolution is approved. Am I going fast enough for you, Michelle? Next, we'll move on to the readoption of the established policies, rules and regulations from this date through the organizational meeting of 2020. Do I have a motion to approve the readoption of the established policies, rules and regulations from this date through the organizational meeting of 2020?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries for the readoption of the established policies, rules and regulations from this date through the organizational meeting of 2020. Now we'll move on to take action regarding committees.
Question, Jen, so there is a committee that's missing on here, which was the LCAP committee that we voted on last spring. I know Michelle brought that up, but that's not listed as a committee organization.
Thanks, Maggie.
I don't know what that needs to be done to change to formalize it as a, it's not in our official list. Add it to the motion?
Yeah, add to the motion.
So, I'll, I'd like to make a motion to add a, a ninth committee to select one representative to the LCAP committee in a two-year, I guess it's a LCAP committee.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I have a point of clarification. If, I have a question about whether we should call one of the committees the empathy committee, or whether we should call it the social and emotional wellness committee or social emotional learning committee. It is currently listed as the empathy committee, the empathy project committee. How do we, how do we consider revising that name?
Why don't you wait until you get to that item, and then you can discuss it then and include it in your motion.
Okay, great, thanks. All right, so, do we, do, do we need to have a discussion first on these committees? Or do you want me to read out kind of what each committee is for, or do I go through each one?
I, it's totally up to you. I don't think it's required or necessary since it is printed in the agenda, with a description of each of the committees.
Okay.
But it's, it's up to you.
And everyone up here feels comfortable knowing the commit, time commitment?
Yeah.
Okay, great. We'll move on then. So let's select a representative to the HBF and H, Hermosa Valley and Hermosa View Parent Teacher Organization meetings that happen four times a year. They're joint meetings at the NPR, at Hermosa Valley. Do I have, do I need to make a motion, or do we need to just have some?
You can open it up for discussion.
Let's open it up for discussion.
There's a volunteer.
Is there a volunteer? I am currently the representative.
Just as a clarification, there was, it's more than four meetings, I think, I think. Was it stated there as four? Yeah, five, okay.
There may be six meetings. Sorry, there's six meetings. There's four remaining of this school year. Do I have a volunteer? I, I will continue to go to them, but it would be great to have a volunteer.
I would be willing to volunteer if somebody can work as an alternate for me.
I will work as your alternate.
I volunteer.
Thank you, Maggie. Do I have, to approve Maggie as the representative for HBF and HV, Hermosa Valley and Hermosa View Parent Teacher Organization representation?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All, any opposed? Motion carries. Maggie is the representative to HBF and HBPTO, with Jen as her alternate. Next, we'll move on to select two representatives to the city school board district compact. Usually this has been the board president and former president. Do I have a motion to, do I, is there any discussion about that? Do I have a motion to approve Jen Cole and Gardner as representatives to the city school district compact meeting?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Jen and Doug, as representatives to the city school district compact is approved. Moving on, we will select one representative to the LA County School Trustees Association. Any discussion? Any volunteers?
Who's the current rep for that? I am. I've attended one, it's the, right, the Norwalk. I was able to attend the first one, I didn't attend the second one. It's about six dinners a year. And I'm happy to remain.
I moved.
Be fast. I'll second that. Before she changes her mind.
I hear a volunteer in Barb, and it sounds like we have a motion, sorry, we have a motion to approve Barb as a representative to the Los Angeles County Committee on School District Organization. Is there a second?
Second.
Didn't you?
Oh, I thought I had a second. I thought she moved and I seconded it.
Oh, Maggie moved, Doug seconded, and sorry. All, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries as Barb is representative to the Los Angeles County Committee on School District Organization is approved. Going to move on to letter K, select represent, representative to, we're going to select, select representative to the Measure S facilities meeting. Typically, this has been the board president. Any discussion about that?
Did we skip one?
Jay, yeah. All good. First day.
A select representative, representative to the Los Angeles County Committee on the School District Organization. That is different.
Who's currently serving, is that, Michelle? Is that me?
I think that's me.
Oh.
I'm willing to continue as well.
Thank you, Doug.
Move to nominate Doug as representative for the school committee on, or county committee on school district organization.
Great. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All, any opposed? Motion carries. Doug as representative to the Los Angeles County Committee on School District Organization. Now we'll move on to letter K. Any selective, we need to select a representative to the Measure S facilities meeting, and typically that's been the board president. Any discussion on that?
I will move to nominate Jen to be the representative to the Measure S facilities meetings. Second.
Is all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. I have a motion to approve myself as the representative to the Measure S facilities meetings. Select, so we'll move on, we're going to select two representatives to the transformation committee. Any discussion?
Current has been Jen and myself.
Correct.
I would like to continue on this one, just to volunteer on that?
Yep.
If the board is okay.
I'd like to continue on that one as well, but I'm wanting, I'm sensitive to others wanting to, if someone else wants to be on it.
I'm good. Would like to continue.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve Stephen and myself as representatives to the transformation committee?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Jen and Stephen as representatives to the transformation committee is approved. Letter M, we're going to select two representatives to the empathy project and committee. Is there any discussion? Stephen?
I think you meant, you touched on, I had the same thought, in as much as making it a, very worthwhile, parent-led initiative, and, and I think it's been fantastic, right? And we're building on that, but it, to make it broader, the social and emotional wellness, or however you think best to frame it, is particularly important. So, yeah, I would just, reframing, suggest a reframing. Shall I make that a motion?
Can I just ask a question? Maggie, you had said that there was some language out there recently, calling committees like this, like social emotional learning committees, or?
The newest national language around it is SEAD, S-E-A-D, social emotional academic development.
I, I completely support what your, your suggestion is, however, I think it's important for the board to realize that the empathy project is a specific branded committee. It's not the general committee on social emotional wellness. It is, that is a component, obviously, of it, but it's a parent-led group, and we are there to support them and their work, but I, I would not recommend changing the name of it, because it is a branded name that they have been using and working under. If you wanted to establish a, if you wanted, since this is a committee that was driven by parents, if you'd like to eliminate the empathy project, and of course, board members can come to it, to the meetings, and replace it with a new committee that's for social emotional wellness, that would be something that I'd recommend considering.
Does anyone have any comment? Doug?
No, yeah, I agree with the superintendent. You know, this is, there is the empathy project that started last year by the group of parents that is continuing this year. I know there's been a couple of meetings about how to, what it would look like for this year. You know, as everyone said, it does have to do with social emotional wellness, obviously, but it is different. I, I'm in favor of either, either way, but I think I, I agree that it should be delineated.
I, it, I don't think, I, I think it should be brought to the, the group itself, if they want to change it or update the name.
Maggie? Stephen? Stephen, do you have any more comment?
So are we suggesting potentially that that's now an additional one? It's in either, like it's a, potentially you're suggesting like, keep this, because that's branded and it's that, but then if we want something that's broader, make that a second committee or group or focus?
Yeah, I, I would, this is one of those rare opportunities where this is, it's very similar to HBYM, the music group. That was, they, they actually made, huh? They actually made themselves a not, you know, a nonprofit, but you, even though there were board members and district representatives who sat in on those meetings from time to time, that was their group. The empathy project is, is a branded group that we participate in, but it was the parents who brought that to us. So, you can leave it on here and not change the name. You can take it off of here and not formalize a representative, or you can add a separate committee that has to do with social emotional wellness. That's all I got.
Maggie?
Thanks for the clarification on that. I would urge the board that if we do want to look at a social emotional wellness committee, I, I think there is like room there to do it, but I would wait and let's put together a resolution that actually defines what the board would want to look at for that and be really thoughtful. I don't know if making a committee right now without knowing its charge or what we want it to do is, is the best course of action on that. And so I'm, I'm actually in favor of, for the folks, I'd love to hear more from the, the representative who's been part of the empathy project, if there's a need for a formal board role on that, and if there's not, I think it allows for a greater give and take of the board to get involved with it. And so, my thought right now is if it doesn't seem like there is a need for a formal presence to not fill those positions, and then I would be interested, if people want to create another committee, let's, I'd be willing to be a thought partner on what that, what that committee could look like.
Since I've been sitting on the committee, I think that is the best direction. I, I don't think it's a formalized board position for an empathy, the empathy project. I, I actually think the formalized board position should be on a social emotional wellness or social emotional learning committee, and then potentially, the empathy project could fall underneath that or be a wing of that. So, I would, I would, so do I have a motion to, do what? Do not have?
I move to not place two representatives on the empathy project and to close it as a committee.
Second.
Do I have a, is there a second?
Yes, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. So we will, the school board will no longer have representation to the empathy project committee, however, we will review, looking at creating a social emotional wellness or social emotional academic development type of committee via a resolution at a very early date.
And I just want to say, board members are welcome to attend informally. Just, you know, let us know and.
All right, moving on, we're going to select two representatives to the safety committee. Any discussion?
I've-
I'm curious as to what it, what it is, who's on it?
I'm, my name is on it, but this is, I, when we received, this is when I first was aware, so I have not been to a meeting.
Yeah, it's Barbara and Stephen on it currently, and I, I would just, I wonder whether it, for motion, whether we, I mean, given what the improvements that were done at Valley and the plans we have at View and other things, I know there's offenses and security in those aspects, but I, I wonder whether this is, I feel like all of the safety things are in motion, but maybe there needs to be a committee to continually evaluate and-
Well, I think you're, you're right, and I have a couple of thoughts about that. It used to be in the day that safety was kind of looked at as a one-off thing that you would discuss and talk about and review, but now it's an everyday thing. So, maybe we need to redefine what that safety committee is. I do know that Principal Gluck has been extremely involved with her safety committee up at View, and I think that is in particular because the, we haven't gotten to the View modernization yet, and so, I know it's a priority for the board to have closed campuses and safe, safe campuses, and so, she has been working with her committee and they've been fine-tuning. So, does there need to be a formal representation? I, I don't, I don't think so, but as always, board members are welcome to attend, but that would be, you know, up to you. At Valley, we have insulated ourselves more and safety has, actually, our safety focus right now is on mental health, more than anything else, and last year, our focus for safety was really on discipline, which was implemented and restructured, and we've had a great deal of success with. So, I, I mean, it's up to the board. I think we should have a safety committee, but we need to have a little bit of time to redefine what that might look like at Valley. And again, we'll redefine it when we have all of our transition next year, because there'll be new safety standards and expectations when we have our grade levels moving from View down to Valley and, you know, the whole, the whole dance as part of Measure, Measure S. So, I guess the long answer is that I would maybe, maybe have one representative to a safety committee and see which ones going on at the time. That could be at View or Valley.
Anyone else have a comment? Doug?
I, I agree, we should continue with some- I agree, we should continue with some kind of committee. I think particularly with the transition coming up that will be occurring, that that's important. I agree, I don't know if there needs to be two people, I think we can reduce that down to one.
Barb?
Yeah, that sounds good to me. And Stephen, if you wanted to, we could alternate if you wanted to, the two of us remain on. I'd be okay with that.
Maggie? Stephen?
Good.
Okay, so it sounds like we have a... Do we have a motion to approve a revised one board member representative to a Safety Committee that will be further defined?
Yeah, I will move to appoint Stephen to the... As the lone board member to the Safety Committee.
With Barb's an alternative.
Thank you.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries, so Stephen and Barb are... Stephen slash Barb are the representative to the Safety Committee? As one, it will be the main person, one will be the alternate? Okay, I think we have cleared through our committees. Oh, sorry, LCAP, of course, you asked me about that. All right, and the last one is the LCAP.
I'll make it quick. I'll move to appoint Maggie to as the representative, or continue as the representative, on the LCAP Committee.
Great, do we have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Barb. And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries, so Maggie is the LCAP representative.
President Cole?
Yes.
Before we move on to the next question, can we just do some kudos on past president, Mr. Gardner?
Yes, we can. Yes. Does anyone want to also give kudos to past president Gardner? Sounds like...
No pressure.
No pressure.
I can use this one. Doug, I really think we get the presidents we need at the time, we need them, and I think you were so appreciated and so needed this past year, getting us through what was really a difficult year, a lot of public stuff that was out there, and getting through the district transitions for so many different pieces. So you did it with such a sense of calm and kind of this... I loved when you got really loud at some of the board meetings, like, it was just like it was really needed at a couple of times, so you were just right exactly what the board needed and what the district needed this past year, so thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Stephen?
Thank you. I echo a lot of the same comments, and thank you, President Cole, for the remarks upfront. A lot that went into it. I also just think that as a... We've improved our relationships by listening to the... You know, I thought it was a really well point, like, we've... I think some of us are new, and some of the roles and wherever else, but as a board, and under your leadership, really listening to our stakeholders. Also, more collaboration with the city, you know. I think all of those things you helped shepherd us through, and the list of achievements, actually, it made me think on a consideration point of the state of the schools. I don't know if that's an official sort of thing that maybe we could consider, because it's shining a light on all the efforts and the positive outcomes and whatever, I think would be a wonderful thing to do, to formalize and present, so that would be great. But kudos, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I gave you my... You crushed it. Barb?
I have not been around long, but it has been a pleasure and an honor to work with you and to have you as a leader. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Superintendent?
Sure, on behalf of the employees of the district, we really want to... And the parents, I'm sure, I want to thank you for your leadership, and I really enjoyed working with you and having those conversations while you were trying to drive home and sort through life and sort through our mutual responsibilities, and I think that you've really helped to balance out a lot of perspectives that oftentimes I was struggling with, trying to find a pathway, and you're a really good listener and a good problem solver, and I don't know, there's something about... I love when Maggie was talking about your voice getting loud when you get really, you know, like... Either stressed or extremely happy, whichever one. But I get some sort of joy knowing that I can trigger that in you, and so I've really enjoyed the past year, so thank you again very, very much, on behalf of everyone in the district.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you.
Well, we will now move on to item 10, the board reports. Are there any board reports? Oh, look, I'm up first, but I'll let other people go first. Doug, you have any board reports?
Yeah, I have two. I forgot to send them in, it happens. First, I attended, the superintendent mentioned it, the NTMP community meeting number two last week. Maggie was there as well. It was a really good turnout from all the stakeholders from the community, the 12 stakeholders in the NTMP Community Stakeholder Group. The superintendent was there as well, Leanne, from the city, and I thought both of the community meetings were really, really positive, you know, moving things forward, and I was very appreciative of the calm and demeanor that a lot of the community members represented, you know, through this whole process. It has sometimes been a contentious time, particularly around traffic and safety and things like that. And everybody really, you know, behaved themselves, for lack of a better way to put it, which I was really proud to be, really proud to see, and everybody was trying to be constructive and help in the best way that they could, instead of just complaining, which was a really good positive sign to see, so I thought that was really good, and I am eager to see what Fair and Peers comes up with for the actual plan come January. I also attended last week, yeah, it was last week, a View School Tour with Erickson Hall and SVA to kind of, to get a better understanding of... A couple of my fellow board members were there as well, to kind of be able to picture on-site what the View School plans would be, you know, they make beautiful drawings, but it always helps to actually stand there and be like, okay, this is where this would be, and this is where that would be. Or, to be honest, I never actually realized that utility pole was there. I've wanted to buy it a million times. I could not have told you it was there, or all the wires connected to it, or how big a deal it would be, no idea. So to actually see it there and look around was tremendously helpful, so I thank Matt, and Nathan is not here, but I thank him, both of you, for doing that and taking your time, and Anthony, Nancy, as well, and everybody, Kim, and everybody who was there to do that. I found it extremely helpful, so thank you. That's all I got.
Thanks, Doug. We'll move on. Barb?
I had the opportunity to attend the California School Board Association Conference last weekend. Well, it was Thursday through Saturday. I need my glasses to read my notes, sorry. I was inspiring. I stressed out about getting a sub for two days once it came around, and said, why am I doing this? And I got down there, and I've just... It was just, like I said, inspiring. The two keynote speakers, I hope I'm saying it right, Michio Kaku is a physicist and an author. I ordered on Amazon Prime, as he was speaking, I ordered one of his books that arrived before I got home. He's fascinating, talking about the future and what jobs are going to look like in the future. Also, Ron Suskind spoke, he's a very well-known reporter. He's got a documentary out that he... That was nominated for Academy Award last year based on his son, and they're dealing with his son's autism, which I highly recommend. First thing I did this Sunday when I got home was I watched the movie. Inspiring, like I said. There is, I wanted to share with Kim later on, if we get a chance, an attendance program at one of the meetings that I went to that is phenomenal, and it's... Want to see if you're using it, if not, huge resource for the chronic absences. And then there was a lot of information about social-emotional learning. That was, it was all over the place, so I have a lot of information on that that I'd be happy to share with principals. Also, there, I collected a lot of information about apprenticeships, because as the physicist was talking about, it's going to be... The jobs of the future are going to be the skilled labors, because a robot cannot be programmed to do the plumbing and do the electrical and build a home, and all of these unions that were represented there that have apprenticeship programs are short of people, they're in desperate need. So I have a lot of information about that, and I also attended a session regarding the economic outlook for the country, the state, and how it will affect school districts through 2024, and it's looking okay, fingers crossed. That's it, thank you.
Thanks, Barb, that was great. Next, Maggie?
Yeah, last week, I was down also for the CSBA... Ah, the other mic. Last week, I was down for the CSBA, for the Delegate Assembly, that was on Wednesday. The Delegate Assembly, there's 26 regions across the state with a number of delegates from each region. And with that, there were a series of updates announced to the policy platform. One, the CSBA is dropping its support for its full and fair funding proposal. That was something we had passed a resolution on. They've done a lot of polling, and there's another bill that's supposed to go on the March ballot, or is likely to go on the March ballot, called Schools and Communities First, and they were worried about the competition for too much money being allocated to schools and students, and that neither would pass. So they've pulled theirs for a future election, potentially 2020, or maybe even 2024. They... Last spring was a large, in-depth look at special education across the state, and so with that, they had come out with several reports. They are looking in on how to work through the due process claims with families, so that's something they're working on, some policy things. They are coming out with a list of NPS schools in terms of how they are looked at from student experience and also cost, and the services they provide, so districts will have a better sense of what are the NPS placements. And then lastly, there was, on a super nerdy policy level, there was an hour and a half floor fight about climate change. And so the larger issue was whether or not Northern California schools... How much money should Northern California schools use from their general funds to fight back forest fires and some of the other things that are really hitting hard up in Northern California? They made the unfortunate decision to call it climate change, which then created a really large political fight about whether or not it exists. So it... And that fight took place, and it won, and so that conversation got tabled into a committee that will meet in sometime in the next couple of years. So it was, I think it was unfortunately labeled conversation about school resources, but it is now in committee on how schools should better deal with weather and how that affects general funds and students. That was it on the Delegate Assembly.
Thank you, Maggie. Sorry that that... That sounds like it was good, and then it was a bummer. Stephen? All right, I have a few to report out on. Maggie and I attended the South Bay Board Presidents' Meeting on November 22nd. There were representatives from El Segundo, Manhattan Beach, Torrance, and CBSA and Redondo Beach. So a lot of great conversation, just to kind of find some unity between the districts, and seeing what other school districts are doing and coming, just looking at, in terms of security. Our focus was on security, social-emotional wellness, some legislation in special ed. In terms of security, we talked just about what different people are doing in terms of using different systems. Redondo Beach talked about using Titan. Some South Bay... Torrance talked about using ballistic film on glass at entrances, which was really interesting. They were talking about how, just having some pre-scripted communication to ensure messages are clear and appropriate with all departments across the city and school districts, so there was a lot of common language. There was a discussion about the Sandy Hook Promise and using the Anonymous Tip app that people are using that they found really helpful, and I know we talked about, a little about that, at another time as well. And I know we're using the Sandy Hook Promise, I'm not sure if we're using the Anonymous Tip app yet, but they're finding it helpful in Torrance, I know at least they're using it there. I talked about gun safety in the home, and then Bill Fornell at Manhattan Beach talked about that they were working on this resolution as well. We talked about after-school programs and EDP programs on campus, and how safety and security plans are, were addressing those kind of across the board, since it's still at our school sites and still often on the responsibility of the principal or the people at the school site, to making sure that all those groups that use schools are having some, you know, concurring plans, and that maybe we start looking across South Bay districts to make sure that we're, you know, kind of in line with what other people are doing with their EDP programs. A lot of times, it's like, oh, that's their program and not our program, and I think just having some common plans, and just knowledge of what to do and how to do it is good, good practice. Regarding social-emotional wellness, there was conversation about using the More Than Sad program that we had talked about at our district, but we're not sure yet, but in terms of, that's a suicide prevention organization that's national, that Maggie and I met with her. Talk about bringing, there was a... There's a lawsuit that's being brought up against Juul, the e-cigarette manufacturers, and wondering whether we are going to join in on LAUSD's class action lawsuit against e-cigarette manufacturers. And CBSA was suggesting that districts can file a friend-of-the-court brief in support and or pass a resolution supporting LAUSD's actions, so that was an interesting direction, because I know that for us, in Hermosa, it's taking, it often takes a lot of our time at the district level. Let's see, they talked about using a program called Ruler from Yale for social-emotional learning and emotional intelligence, which was really interesting. I brought up talking about the pressures placed on eighth graders heading into high school in terms of summer classes, and that continued a conversation in terms of how Maggie was talking about LMU having a really challenging time with people who have great resumes but struggle at a university level. So just kind of bringing that to the fore, just to letting our colleagues know at the high school level that we're hearing a lot of that conversation from the middle school parents and students, that it's a lot of work to go to school all summer, all year, and then all summer long as well, to prepare for high school. And then there was a conversation about having some joint workshops on, talking about secondary school stress. Sarah Bradshaw brought up some legislation, she talked about full and fair funding and Communities First, she kind of prepped us on that, and then Brad Waller talked about AB48 and the state formula for bond funding allocations, but it won't likely favor South Bay schools. And then Maggie would talk about the special ed due process rules for districts. And then we talked about how to maybe continue to look at doing South Bay SELPA kind of conversations around special ed, just to make sure that we're kind of, especially with the due process in mind, just so we're all kind of in more lockstep on some of that information. And then we talked again about meeting, meeting together on March 6th to kind of have another meeting with all the board presidents. It's very, very helpful to have the connection across the South Bay with the board presidents. That was a very enlightening meeting for me. Not sure about you, Maggie, but I think it was for you as well. Sounds like it's been for you before, Doug. Let's see, the next meeting I want to talk about is the HBPTO and HBEF Joint General Meeting, and a couple of highlights from that is, we had the South Bay Families Connected come and do a... Just like, basically, a program overview of their website, and reminding families that they have great resources on the South Bay Families Connected site, and it's linked on our website. Really, lots of information on vaping, how to talk to your students about vaping, your kids about vaping, social media and mental health, so lots of great family resources there, and that I think we've, would like to, you know, continue to push that information out. And so it was nice to have someone there to talk, I mean, it's a great audience, because there's, you know, 25 people there that are, you know, actually influencers, I think, in the community that are going to go and hopefully replicate and remind people to use that website more often. Talked a lot about using Amazon Smile for your holiday gifts, and Mom's Night Out is January 29th. I wanted to thank personally Tracy, forgetting her last name, Tracy Vandisal? Vandisal, who's stepping down as the... I think she's the treasurer, or vice president, Secretary of HBEF, and she has done a tremendous job. She got on to HBEF before she even had kids in the school, so she is just a really dedicated volunteer, and she is... So she is just a really dedicated volunteer, and she is moving to DC or Virginia with her family, and we will miss her terribly. But I wanted to thank her personally, because she has done a really tremendous job supporting HBEF in our schools. They wanted to let everyone know that all the grandparents club letters have been sent out. The market, this is, I'm just going down my list of how things were talked about. The market in terms of the endowment was, had a very great quarter. It was up 14.8%. So we've had $350,000 in year-to-date gains, which was great news. There's a real estate rollout that, that's going to be called Hermosa Home Heroes, so you should be hearing about that. And if you're a real estate agent in the area, please contact Rachel at HBEF. She will connect you with how you can be even a greater supporter of the Hermosa VED Foundation. And the PTO side of things, Halloween Carnival was a huge success. They raised $3,000 more than they have in the past. They have, teacher grants are still available. They've done, let's see, they had 300 pounds more candy this year from the, turning your candy in for the thanks to the troops. And students wrote 599 letters to troops with the candy, which was really amazing. Read Across America is coming up. They need volunteers. And that is, that is the big news that was happening. It's, we, again, we appreciate greatly HBEF and PTO. They do a tremendous job helping our students and our, and our schools survive and do, and thrive. The last committee I wanted to talk about was the empathy committee. We met, but we called it the Social Emotional Wellness Committee the day we met, but we will call it the Empathy Committee. There was a book that was selected, and I just brought it this time. It's called Because of Mr. Turp. This is the book that, that they are going to, with the, with the idea and the theme behind that will be perspective-taking. And in January, we are going to meet with the students in the startership class and kind of give the students back the learning by asking them to kind of understand what we were trying to do with the empathy project and kind of getting their buy-in and how they feel like they could own the project with us and with their families. So we've, we've kind of outlined January 27th through February 1st. That's Kindness Week at the both school sites, and we were hoping to kind of wrap the book and potentially some other projects around that, but giving it back to the startership class to kind of come up and develop some of those ideas. So I think the meeting with them is the second week in January now. And that is the majority of what we talked about there. There were other things we talked about, but I think that those things were just more ideas and that they probably will more come to light in a social emotional wellness, or a social, social emotional academic development type of committee. And that's all I have tonight. And I forgot I'm still leading the meeting, so here we go. Yes, so, all right, so we'll move on. Any other, any other things? All right. We are going to move on to the Superintendent Report and Board Discussion. And these eyes are for, these items are for information and discussion. And can I just make a note before we start, is that we are going to hear some great information in the next few minutes? And, oh, never mind, I'll, I'll say that afterwards. Anyway, go ahead. Pat, Superintendent Report. We will start with R-1819/20 on the Hermosa View School Design and Cost Information. So I know, oh, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, thank you.
Yeah.
Did, did you have something else to? Take a breath. Welcome to the podium, Bob Simon and Matt Gates and Ella Viela, who, well, Bob is the owner of SVA Architects, and we know Matt from Erickson Hall. And Ella, hi, do you want to just say hi to everybody? She's, she's working very closely with Nathan and I, and our team and Bob, and she's part of SVA. Yeah.
Nice to see a name and a face.
Thank you for being here. Now, Southwest did not coordinate and cooperate with Nathan. He was supposed to be here. So on his bat phone, he called Bob, and Bob zipped up here from who knows where. And
Mr. Arigot.
And so it's really good to see you.
Oh, thank you.
And Bob was really involved in the process over the four years we've been here. Matt drove up from, I say Mexico, but it's really San Diego. And it's, it's great for you all to be here. Now, at our last meeting, both SVA, it was Nathan that time, and Erickson Hall, Matt, were here to walk you through some of the considerations for your, or options for your consideration regarding the View project, which is up and coming after the completion of North. The board asked for a couple of not great questions, and we've been doing our homework and putting our heads together. One of the items that Doug mentioned already was the request for a tour, and so we did conduct that tour. I later went on a separate tour with Jen. She was unable to make the other meeting, and so she's been on the property and seen, been able to see the site as well. The other thing that you asked us was to come back with a, a presentation that clarified the options a little bit more fine-tunely, and I, I really want to thank both of your groups for working with us so closely. Nancy's been a big part of it as well from our, from our district. So welcome, and thank you for, for the update.
Good, yeah. I hope this doesn't make it more confusing for you. We'll do our best. Again, just to walk you through, you know, of course, the bond language, you know, that's associated with Proposition S. We don't need to go through all that detail again, but the overall progress on the project, do you want to report on that?
The, the overall progress, we're under construction at North School, and thanks for your opportunity to talk to you tonight. We're under construction on North School. The re-roofing and lighting projects at View, as well as Valley, have been completed under separate contracts, and we have the original design for View that has been submitted to DSA, and we've received some comments back.
And just the overall progress of the budget today, based on the overall $59 million bond budget, $32.4 million have been essentially appropriated for, for this, the program up to now, and that includes North School plus some of the other ancillary projects that Matt had mentioned to us. But it does include work at both View School and Valley School, and that leaves roughly $26.6 million is the balance associated with it. But, you know, there's other opportunities hopefully to obtain or to increase that budget. Again, the original bucket A list is $59 million, but there's a potential for matching funds. As we all know, there's a ballot measure coming up in November for a statewide ballot, and so certainly North would qualify for some matching funds associated with it. So it's been estimated roughly about $2.8 million, which again would increase your overall budget. And another option for it would be state matching funds for View, you know, plus there is a kinder fund that's out there, which would give you another $1.8 million. And the kinder fund, as you know, is for essentially full-time kindergarten. So there are some options for funding, so that 59 million could potentially be up to over $65 million. Okay. North School, you know, again, what's been essentially earmarked for it is $28.5 million. I won't go into all the detail of the project, but you've seen it before. And, and that's kind of identifies all the project status associated with it. Is that okay, Pat?
Yeah, I would just add that there's a comparison between what was the scope that was presented before the voters and the Measure S Bond Campaign, and then what elements, which of those elements, which is all of them, were included in the, in the actual final design.
Yeah, and I know there's some ongoing discussions regarding traffic and circulation, and of course, that will be adjusted exactly as, as things develop. For View, you know, essentially the, the option has been developed. A big portion of the work has been included in the development of the project, and this is for, let's go through the three options effectively for View. And option number one is construction value of roughly $23 million, and that includes the whole program amount associated with it. You know, with some of the exterior upgrades, probably will be pushed back a bit, but it essentially, you know, appropriates roughly $23 million for that project itself. Option 1A, oh, sure, go ahead.
It, it's not the total, it doesn't include the soft costs, so the, it's construction.
Construction costs.
Yeah, just clear.
Sorry about that. And then option 1A would be a construction cost roughly of $21 million, and the idea was to develop an alternate for the modernization of the six classrooms on campus. And so we put that as, or actually, I guess it's the nine, nine existing classrooms, and that'd be put in as an alternate for the project itself, roughly saving you roughly about $2 million. Yeah. And then option two would be to do a reconfiguration though, but based on what's existing there. And the challenge with that is that we already have plans in DSA. We already have comments back, so it would be a redesign effort, which, you know, you're going to save overall some money for it, but at the same time, you know, with escalation and what we're seeing in the industry, you know, it's probably hard to know completely, Matt, right?
Additionally, there'd be some additional soft costs included in that redesign.
So those are the three options that we're presenting to you today. Okay. And some of the priorities at, at Valley School that has been developed and completed, you know, and, or that's part of the, the initial project are highlighted, and, and those are the associated items. It's updating the parking lot, district office improvements, and then the science and art modernization would be part of that program, and that roughly about $4 million, three and a half, $4 million. Okay? Those are some of the improvements associated with it. So, you know, this is kind of a summary of options, but again, if the project, if, if we're essentially working off the $59 million overall budget, you'll have roughly about a million dollar shortfall to do all the options, including, you know, if you do full option number one, sorry, and then option 1A and two would be essentially as I presented it. Option, the bucket list of, if you have $62 million, you have roughly options, I guess, 1A, and option two for the savings on that. I gotta go through that myself. And then the final one is the $65 million option, and then there'd be a significant amount of money remaining for Valley, you know, in the development of the project, so. Okay, are there any thoughts or questions? I know it's a quick summary.
Clarification on the colors used?
Do we have any comments or questions? Maggie?
Clarification on the colors, specifically looking at option 1A, the tan versus the green versus the yellow.
Yeah, let's go back. There we go. And so the, the tan color are, basically we would develop, we'd, we'd develop the plans, but it would be bid out as an alternate in cost, so essentially we know what that project will cost. And so if we have a decent bid climate, there might be the possibility of that work. Is that correct?
Yeah, the, the tan color is the alternate. It would be an additive alternate, and we'd have firm fixed price for that scope. So pending release of any additional monies from the state, either through reimbursement for the modernization eligibility or kinder money coming free, you could allocate that, or you could move forward with the, the Valley work as it's released.
Yeah, and so everything in green is in, in the scope and is in the project itself, right?
Correct.
Maggie, do you have any more questions?
Not clarification, I have discussion questions.
Okay. Any more clarification questions, Stephen?
On the funding sources, do we know the dates on, it does say on some of these? But when will we, when will that become clearer?
Well, you know, again, unfortunately, we won't know until November this next year. I mean, you'll be in line, right?
It's actually March.
You actually, there's actually different timelines. So the, the modernization money that you're allocated for, for the North School, the 2.7, that, that would be determined as money's released off of the new bond. So you'd, you'd be seeing a, a status update October, November of this year. The kinder money is off of general fund, so you'd be seeing a notification of eligibility and the size of the grant April, May of this year.
You're saying this year, you mean 2020?
Excuse me, 2020, yes.
Great. And is, I mean, when you're in line for these things and so forth?
Once you're allocated, you get in line.
Yeah.
And as the bonds are sold at the state level, where you're at in the line, they'll pay off, and then there's the next bond sale, and then it'll keep going down the line.
Right.
So right now, there's about $5 billion left off of the last statewide bond. And then the current bond election for this March allocates about $8 million to K-12 schools.
Billion.
Eight billion?
Billion.
Billion.
With a B.
With a B.
That's great. And then of course, that then times, so the, the language, the verbiage of additive, alternate, that then, because we wouldn't need to, that then can kick in for 2021.
You could make the decision anytime throughout the course of construction to incorporate that, pending your notification from either the kinder money grant or the modernization grants.
So we, we've received plans back from DSA with the comments, and so really we're waiting for direction to see if we go with which of the three options that we're presenting today.
Great. And in terms of those comments and review, it's all going through swimmingly?
Yeah, it's going well.
Good.
Yeah, so we haven't really started, because we need to
Yeah.
have direction, whether we want to have a new design or keep the design that is in place right now. That also will dictate the bond for the kindergarten, because if we have a new design that will delay the process with DSA, basically we'll have to go back with a new DSA submittal, and that would take longer. So we probably will be looking at further after March, April.
And could you, would you mind just clarifying the current plan in with DSA?
We already submitted to DSA. They already take the first look, so we have coming back, so we have to address, and then it has to be resubmitted again, and that's for the option 1 and 1A. That's, that's the same design. Now, option 1A, as we mentioned, will not, we will have the tan color, which is the modernization of the nine buildings, separated. It will be part of the drawings, but when they, when you bid it out,
Yeah.
it's, it's gonna be two separate bids, but you have a fixed price for both of them. So the money that is left, as Matt mentioned it, then will go to that tan line.
And the, but the actual plan in with DSA, because the modifications that you've made, where it's the truncating of the staircase and those bits and pieces, I just want to be clear.
Yeah, so let's go back to.
I don't think we've got it. We've got it here. I don't know if it's in the deck.
Right, okay. So for instance, the current plan, where the purple new classroom building sits, that currently that hillside goes away, and you have the two-story building.
Yeah.
All of that has gone through DSA through an initial review.
Yeah.
Comments are received back. As part of the back check, where we address the comments that they have, we can shift the building, we can narrow the staircase, and make the modifications that we've talked about in order to reduce the price and still maintain the original design.
Integrity of the.
Integrity design. Move, shift the driveway up, out of the way of the utilities. All of that can be done during the back check.
Great.
So you're, you're, you can continue to move forward with the original design and the original plan check, if you will, the original schedule, and not miss a beat, going to a option, to, or option 1A.
Right.
You can, you can still maintain that schedule and still be in line to apply for the kinder grant.
Right.
And then you're still, you're already in line for the North modernization money.
Great. But option two, you, that.
You scrape everything and you start over, and basically you're about a year away from having a set of plans. So pending if the state has kinder money, a year later, you could reapply.
Right.
But there's that opportunity you may miss.
Thank you.
Doug?
Yeah, thank you. A couple of clarifying questions. Piggybacking off the, the kinder money that you were mentioning, it's very helpful to know if we go with the option two, we may not be ready in time for that. If we went for the 1 or 1A, as far as anybody is aware, is there any reason why we wouldn't get that money?
You you need to apply, and I know last year, they, the allocation off the general fund was taken about two months after it was advertised. People are beginning to know about it, but there's really no line. It's applying and talking to your representatives and and giving Governor Newsom to to sign the check.
Sign the check.
Yeah, but there, we would meet all the requirements, basically.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. And then quickly on the the bonds, just to make sure that's clear. If the bond does not pass in, I believe it is March, then the bond, state matching funds from the bonds were both North and View. We wouldn't get any of that because there's no bond. Is that correct?
Correct. Right now, the line for the current bond, it's it's eaten up once they sell those bonds.
Right, yeah.
There's already a line for that money.
So we we get in the next line, assuming there is the next line?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. And then I think the the one other question I had was, there's a potential, I would think, for a bucket D, which is money that would come out of North School or contingency from View School that we've already allotted that would come out, you know, if we were just fifty-nine million, we have a GMP for North School. Do we get a sense yet? I'll talk specifically on North because we don't know about, we don't have a GMP for View yet. Is there a sense that there may be money available from North School? That we may have been too conservative in a GMP in budgeting for that? Do we have a sense of that, of a number potentially?
There there was a hazardous material allowance that was carried, and we did not spend all of it. In terms of the rest of the work, as we get up out of the ground, we're still in the in the earthwork phase and the foundations. We can be a little bit more definitive in in the number, but definitely on the hazmat number, there is money coming back to the district.
Right, and that money could then be applied to.
To anywhere in your program.
Yeah, additive alternative or the Valley or the district office or anything? Do we have a sense of how much is coming back from that hazardous item line?
No, no, not, not.
Not off the top of your head?
Yeah, they're not off the top of my head. I know, I know there is money coming back, though.
Okay, thank you. Those are all the clarification questions I had. I do have discussion points if we're gonna get to this.
Great, thanks, Doug. Barb?
Just a couple also clarification questions. So the extra soft costs to redesign and reapply would be approximately how much? It's my understanding about a million dollars?
Yeah, please.
And does anybody know where in the queue we are?
So we're, we are in line for the current bond, I mean, the twenty sixteen bond, I guess we have to use the dates. The November twenty sixteen bond, we are in line, but we are at the the tail end because of the delays that we have had since the election. So we would be at the head of the line if we were to, if the bond gets passed in November. So we've been working really closely. Nathan also has been working with our, Nancy, with our consultant, who is, has submitted our application. Our application for the North funding is in place. We are at the beginning of the line if the March twenty twenty bond passes. If we get our D, our View plan through DSA, let's say, in order to get the kindergarten grant in April, and the bond is passed in March, then we would be, we would have a very quick turnaround to get into line again with View and then be be ready for the for the grant. So our consultant has everything ready. What we're waiting on is DSA approval on View in order to move forward. But we've been preparing the applications, they're not a simple credit card application. They are quite involved, and so we, but they both require a DSA approval.
And sorry, one more question or clarification. It's my understanding that the more we put things off, the the larger the increase in construction costs.
Well, that's what.
It's going up by.
Absolutely, that's what we're all facing.
So far, thirty-five percent, did I hear that since since this all started?
You know.
Didn't it increase by thirty-five percent since this whole, since the bond passed?
Yeah, probably about that.
Yes.
Yeah, we're seeing roughly, you know, it's again debatable, but roughly about eight percent a year.
Maggie, do you have a clarification?
Yeah, clarification question. When we talk about modernization of classrooms at View as the, underneath the alternate, can you describe what that is?
That is technology upgrades.
What does that include?
The monitors and the infrastructure to run the computers off the monitors.
We also talking about new flooring, new wall, new paints, new casework, new HBAC. Windows were replaced recently, so windows, no, but new doors, new roofing, yeah, all those materials.
Thanks, Maggie. Thanks, Barb. I have a couple clarifying questions. Can you talk about the soft costs that, I'm not sure you all can talk about it, or Paula, that you can talk about it. Can we just talk about who and how those, the soft costs were determined and gathered? So we know in terms of what we're looking at. There was a four million dollar soft cost on North. And just can you kind of walk us through how, who was in like kind of the process?
So Nancy and I got together, and we went through our bond file cabinet as well as our electronic record and reconciled everything in the different categories because for our COC, we have them categorized in a different format. So we went through both cabinets and compared and contrasted and and came to an agreement, reached the committed costs, and then we projected additional costs through the end of the project. And that's what you see in the North column. So it's committed, completed, and some projected.
Thanks, Paula. Maggie, did you have a question? I have some other questions as well. In terms of when we see the funding, so it's okay for, this is just me not 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 knowing, when a bond gets approved, so Erickson Hall holds the funding. I mean, like, we don't get paid until November, but the job's gonna start sooner than November. How do we make sure that you continue? How does that work with your industry?
Well, we, are you talking about the additive alternate if if we went with one, one A?
Correct, or even if we went with one, and we get all these bonds passed, but we, that's an eight million dollar.
Well, you can't, okay, some of that eight million dollars is on the DO and Valley. So we aren't, we're not under contract for that. You're obligated to have the money available to sign a contract if we're gonna start on View. An additive alternate gives you the opportunity. So you have twenty-one million. So you can award for the base bid of twenty-one million, and then as you get money from other sources, you can award that additive alternate as you get the money. You cannot award the full twenty-three million dollar project if you don't have twenty-three million dollars. So that gives you some opportunity to where you can delay the decision or the award, or maybe do some negotiation or value engineering to modify that additive alternate as you get your funding.
Okay, that helps. And then talk to us about, so there's twenty-three million that's, you know, put in this deck for View, right? As the View option one?
Yes.
Right. So how do we guarantee that that's gonna be twenty-three million in a year from now? Just so, because because we're, the money is not gonna, you know, keep growing on a tree. It's just.
Well, okay, so we.
We need to make sure that that twenty-three million stays twenty-three million.
Right, so we've priced, we've priced this project with the current DSA submission set. We've had some discussions with the design team in terms of comments. We've also utilized our trade partners, our subcontractors, to provide some of the pricing. And then we've also put in an escalation clause as well as a contingency. So as, once the design is finalized and stamped, we can again price it up and utilize those kind of unknowns to lock in the the contracts. Candidly, as we move forward through North, if the plans are approved in April, May, we'll be bidding this. We'll probably have about an eight-week, ten-week bid process with our subcontractors to lock them in to an LOI or a subcontract agreement to lock those prices in. And that'll give you the guaranteed maximum as we move forward, even though we're a year away.
But you feel confident in this twenty-three million? Like, you'd stand behind twenty-three million?
Yes.
Okay. And then just so.
I'm up here.
Yes, thank you. And I'm just trying to get you to say it.
I'm kinda.
And then, just so I'm clear, there there would be approximately a blank amount for soft costs on View School, of which we've spent already. Have to find my notes. Paula, do you know off the top of your head? Or in here? It's not off the top of anybody's head. So we've spent currently one point four, five million on View already in soft costs, and we have project an additional three point nine, right? So that, I'm just wanting to make sure we're all not looking at it at a twenty-three. It is the total of the project, the gross of the project for us. It's not as, you know, it's not, it's not on you or you, it's on us to know that it's, it is not twenty-three million right here. It is twenty-three million plus our soft costs. So just so everyone's really, that, to me, that's a real clarity moment. So that was, that was just a point of clarification for ourselves. Sorry, let me just look down my list here. Can you give us a sense, can you clarify for us? In your experiences in the past, you, working with schools and of these, going for these bonds, how reliable is it to depend on this funding?
These days, I think it's pretty reliable. I mean, state bonds have been very successful. And the last several have passed. And, you know, and I think this is, I guess, March is the Democratic primary. So I think there's better even option for that, and there's there's no mistake and no reason why it didn't happen there. And so I think there's a good chance for it to happen.
Great, thanks. And you guys have seen this happen. I think we're, my nervousness is, we've not done this before, and you guys have done this plenty of times. So I just want experts to be like, this is normal, normal.
Typically, when you're creating your program and and budgeting, districts as they start out will carry a state matching number through their program. And the question is when it's released. But they do carry it as a standard practice in their budgeting, in their soft costs, where this money is gonna go, and they allocate where it will go. And then they'll also try and time when they're expecting it. And and all of it is, it goes back to when are your plans stamped up? Because you can't get in line until you have approved drawings.
Thank you. It just, it's really reassuring to have experts that have done this multiple times in multiple different districts with multiple state funding to tell us that this is normal practice.
It's very normal. Yeah, it it does seem a little counterintuitive, but it, this is a standard practice when you're creating a bond program and moving forward.
Okay, thank you. Another question I have is on, on slide twelve, I know SBA has put together kind of like what their school priorities would be in terms of funding. I just wanna make sure that if if, that we can still, we'll be able to still have a conversation about what, you know, we we don't necessarily have to agree with your priorities, but we would need to have a conversation about priorities, is that correct?
Definitely.
Slide twelve, Valley District Office School Priorities, yes.
Those, those are just some suggestions, but we don't have any plans. We don't, we haven't gone through the same process that we went through North and.
And just to clarify, these funds right here are just for the bare, kind of bare bones, school priority, the ones that SBA has put forth, not necessarily the whole laundry list of school attributes that that initially we'd wanted to see it.
Right, that, those numbers were budgeted off of the schematic plans for those various buildings. And that was about, that was about it. There's no programming or anything else.
I, I would just say that the, 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 I mean, we have not value engineered any of, any of these three buckets. So we would definitely have the boards and put on that. We would be making recommendations based on that. And then also, you would want to, bless you. This is part of, this slide right here, this building is the art and three science classrooms, one of which, one of the science classrooms was the Challenger Space Lab. That was, you guys are moving too fast, okay. And so that's four classrooms combined to three. That was something that the bond, bless you, bless you, that the, was in the bond scope about looking at the specialty programs in terms of modernizing the those areas. However, we can live without that. The other piece of scoping in the Valley project was the redo of all the cabinetry in the, in the classrooms. We can live without that as well. The cabinetry is sufficient. We were looking as a way to open up for more mobile learning within the classroom. That still can take place. It was more of a want versus a need. And if you were to end up with money that you didn't expect, you could always put that, prioritize it wherever you want on your list. Valley has the bones in place. The majority of the money from the last bond went into Valley. So you're looking at, this is, this is a want, it's not essential. The, but we do need cosmetic work at that school, carpet, paint. We've already done the lighting. We want to replace the monitor, put in monitors, but we've already done all the technological networking and infrastructure there. And then at the district office, you can, you'll have some conversations about that, too. It can either be, we have to, I haven't looked at this for a while, the value engineering. If there is any, I think it's pretty basic, as I remember. But you also have what, you know, Matt was talking about, about bringing in the portables we've got at View. And maybe you want to put those temporarily down in that space. So you have some options. Those are, those, that's the next chunk of conversations we're gonna have. Does that help? Okay.
It helps tremendously.
Do you guys agree?
Yes.
And can I just add one, like, point, just so I'm just like clarifying for myself and for the public that might be listening? And this is a, these are yes or no questions. These are things I just wanted to point out that all campuses are gonna have, single points of entry. So all campuses are gonna have single points of entry. Fencing and safety upgrades, all campuses are gonna have it. Lighting upgrades at all campuses. ADA access at all campuses. AC at all campuses. Consistent look and feel across our campuses.
Yes, that's a goal.
Yeah. And twenty-first century learning environments.
Yes.
So meaning like campus technology that we're either bringing over or that has been upgraded. So we're putting in state-of-the-art monitors, planning on state-of-the-art science labs if we get money to come down to Valley, if we have money left over.
That building does have science labs with acid, acid waste tops, the full-blown cabinetry, and that, that was included in the price.
Okay, great. And then playground equipment at all campuses?
Yes.
And then we're gonna be looking at furniture costs and how those costs could impact the budget as we move through the process. That was a conversation we'd had with Nathan. And then are there any things that we should be preparing the public that things might not be happening? Like, anything that they, that anybody's hearing that the public might, might be expecting that we are not providing?
No, you don't have to share with us any public comments that that are coming that way, but no.
I mean, it's the additive alternatives. I mean, it's if, if that, with that one plan, it's just those modernization elements
Correct.
would be, that, you know, that's the, I mean, that's the planned alternate, but but that would, you know, it's contingent upon.
Yeah, and we've done programs where even those alternatives become, as funding becomes available, you know, you take a smaller bite out of the apple, but then eventually you complete the work.
Right.
Really, as, as dollars and funds become available. And classrooms are the easiest to do it with.
And I guess that, I'm thinking it through, the only other thing was actual desks and chairs and things, no? I mean, because that's not included, I mean, that's not in this bond, so.
It is in the bond.
Furniture. Furniture's not-
Furnishings, they're, in the architectural world, furnishings also reply, is also playground equipment, and so, that, that's what the intent of that was. We have furniture. Do we have 21st century furniture? Oh, no. Do we, but we didn't, but our bond was about aging facilities and increased classroom space. So, um-
Right.
Great.
We're gonna have an amazing, exactly, yes. But there is an element of, you know, North classrooms may, will have our existing furniture going up into there, and it's-
They may.
They may, yeah.
I just wanted to clarify that before we go, you know, I just want, I want people to be aware now.
But generally, anything fixed, that's built in place, will be built, I mean, will be in, in the room.
Yeah, all the cabinetry that-
Movable furniture is what's excluded, right?
Right, the movable furniture.
Doug, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify, a lot of the things that you were asking the questions, and they said, yes, if we go with option two, and View School are not going to happen, because it won't be a single point of entry, it would not be ADA accessible, things like that, I wanted to make sure that that's clear to, to everybody here and the public, that that's basically what we're here debating, is, is it more important to have those and spend the little extra money and take the risk we might not have as much for the rest? Or do we say, we're not gonna take that risk, and we don't have some of those things? So, that's an important clarification. I want to make sure as we go through this debate, everybody is on this-
And let me say, you're still betting on the, you know, the economics of construction, that it's gonna more be stabilized, right? Because if we delay another year, you know, are we gonna see another 8%? Are we gonna see another 12%? It's a challenge, I think.
Any other clarifying questions, then we'll move on to discussion? Is that a discussion, the way you call it?
Small points of, when will we see the renderings? When would they come out for View, like, once a plan is, like, how quickly? Because to your point about, it's hard as a, to see this, to go, oh, this is gonna be absolutely beautiful, and we've got some pictures of it, so, but I'm just like, when can we more actively promote, I guess, plans? How far down the line do renderings and other things come?
Would it be more thematic, do you guys wanna see some rendering that we can discuss?
We have to go to the mic.
Thank you.
If you really need them, then we can discuss it with the superintendent and give you a timeframe, because it'll take sometime to get them done.
They're looking at this, this picture, this-
They want the same-
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
Right, but we're not there yet, because we've made those-
Once this plan, yes.
Decisions.
Do we have some loser drawings for the-?
Okay.
Yeah.
Cool.
Thank you.
Any other points of clarification? Okay, should we open this up for discussion? Maggie? Okay. Doug?
The microphone, I'm happy to start. I think it's by prior clarification kind of alluded to. In my opinion at least, this is a no-brainer. I think we have to go with option-
Excuse me, Doug.
Sorry.
Jan, just as a point, you might want to open it up for public comment formally, and then bring it back to the board for discussion.
Because we're not taking a board action on it tonight.
No.
Right?
Still are opening for public comment.
Sure. I'd be happy to open it up for public comment.
My apologies.
Give us one second. Don't go far. Seeing that there's no public comment, can we close public comment? We'll close public comment. Now, we'll move over to Doug.
Okay.
Doug, do you have a comment?
Yeah, I, you know, I, I think this is a, I greatly appreciate everybody's efforts. The folks up here, the superintendent, Nancy, Paula, everyone, making us go through this analysis, because it's been super helpful, and I think this presentation was really terrific. To me, it was, it made it even more of a no-brainer of what we need to go with, which in my opinion is 1A. I think option, to go with option two, I truly believe we will agree as soon as tomorrow. You know, it's not, I know everyone up here is very concerned about making sure that we're giving a project that the voters expected, and option two is not that project. It's not only not what they expected through the bond campaign and what we promised in Measure S, it's also not what we told people when we did all the security upgrades at Valley, and we told them, we're not gonna do them at View, because it's coming in the modernization. Then to go back and say, oh, yeah, no, we're not gonna do that anymore, I think would be a big, for lack of a better term, slap in the face to a lot of the public that was really counting on those. I know there was a big push to do it then, and the responsible thing was to put it off till we did the modernization, but now not to do it is part of the modernization, I think would be a big slap in the face to the public and the community and the parents to do that part. I think 1A is more of the option, because it gives us that flexibility that the bond doesn't pass, something happens with the kinder funding, that we would still have some money left over. As Matt beautifully put, we can't sign a contract for $23 million if we don't have $23 million. If we only have $59 million, we're not gonna have $23 million left over. So, we can't put ourselves in that position, you know? Obviously, there's reserves and things like that, that we could come up with the money we want to, but that's not the fiscally responsible thing to do either. So, I, I, I think it really has to come down to that and get the flexibility that, as these things come in, and then the board can decide. You know, if we have $2 million extra dollars, I don't think we may, I don't know what we would decide. Do we want to spend that $2 million on the nine classrooms? Do we want to build, redo the science room, do we, building? Do we want to do the district office? I think we need to do the parking lot. That's the one thing I remember was a big thing in the Measure S campaign, the parking lot at Valley, and, I mean, for $171,000, we'll, we'll find that. I'm confident in that part. That's probably smaller than whatever we're gonna get out of the hazardous abatement number, would be my guess, would be there. So, I, you know, I think besides from that, Valley's pretty much there. The district office, no offense to the administration, but if we had to do the portables, that's what we would do. We're doing the district office less for a reason, to make sure the money goes in the classrooms, goes in the students, and things like that. And so, I think that's, you know, we'd figure that part out as a board and as administration working together. So, that's my opinion, that I think 1A is kind of like the no, the no-brainer choice for those reasons.
Thank you, Doug. Barb?
Sorry, I'm in full agreement with Doug, and I, I don't even, I can't even imagine considering two. Someone's gonna have to do a lot of convincing for me to, to consider two, honestly.
Maggie?
Yeah, I think Doug really captured that argument really well. Just a big thank you to all the teams that are up here and in the room for doing the work on, on looking at all the costs and trying to put this into a more clear bucket. So, thank you to everybody for, for this presentation today and for all the work leading up to today. I think the, one of the takeaways I was just hearing from tonight, though, I think Matt, just hearing you talk about, just, it really seems like the kindergarten money is, that's a political toss-up, is what I, was my takeaway from that. You were saying, you know, requires lobbying your representatives to get in line for that-
Well, you need to get in line, they'll cut the check. If, if you're slow in submitting, potentially, you're gonna lose out this year. If you lose out this year, potentially next year, well, if you lose out in 2020-
Yeah.
Potentially, you could resubmit in 2021, because we'd be in construction still.
Right.
So, you're not missing your window. So, you have an opportunity of two, two chances if you're, if you're late to the party. But it's a general fund grant-
Yeah.
And there's no, there's no waiting period. Once you're granted, then the money comes.
Did you, did you have a comment off that? No? No, okay. Yeah, so, I, I do think 1A, our only option here, two is, for me, is not an option, and one doesn't, we don't have the money, so it's not an option either. So, it's really off of these options. 1A is the only one where we have the current money and the current budget right now to go through with this, so I'm looking at 1A.
Thank you, Maggie. Stephen?
I'm in 1A as well. I think also, just to build on those things, kudos, like, just the collaboration. I think the benefit of having a lease-leaseback project design and, like, just sit, you know, because we've got so many moving parts here and different project initiatives, and having to reconcile, how do we move things forwards, but also, you know, not forgetting the other campuses and even the district office, albeit at the bottom of the pile. So, you know, I think that's great. Thank you very much for all the collaboration and getting, working through on things. I can't quite, you know, it is that, a poll costs a million, you know, like, there were certain things that are just like, no, explain that to me again. So, thanks for the time to, to go and, you know, I think that we've done this real, as a board, I think, making sure we've done due diligence on the plans and sort of kicked the tires on those, and really understand sort of where you're coming at it from. So, I think we're in a great place for that plan. My understanding as well is that we can't, we can't, we're gonna have a separate session to enact, to-
That's right. This isn't a discussion item tonight because of the magnitude of your decision-making. We wanted to make sure you were comfortable and had your answers, your questions answered before you took an action. And so, we have a special board meeting on Monday night at-
Four o'clock.
Four o'clock for this item only, where you will take action on the option that you're, that you are in support of on that night.
So, we can move really fast on-
So, you can move real, so by Monday at hopefully 4:30, we'll be able to get started.
And so, then, the moving through on things for the application, for all those other things, that are just all, yeah.
It all falls into place, and we will have our marching orders, and all of us will start working super hard. We, we know what the task is ahead of us collectively.
Great, thank you for that.
Yeah, I would, I'm concurring with everyone that I've heard here, and then I just also wanted to thank, I know it's been a tremendous effort to go through and kind of scrub the budgets and see where we're at with all the soft costs and the numbers, and having you put together these presentations and meeting us and kind of realigning the whole board. So, we really appreciate it, because I feel, you know, we have all done our due diligence and a lot of homework on feeling comfortable with this, making this kind of a decision. I would just like to, just in the point, just for a discussion for us, is just make sure that we continue this as we move along, and not necessarily every month, because I know Paula's like, every month, but at least, you know, potentially before every, every meeting where it's the Citizens Oversight Committee, so we really feel like we're in, we have a good handle on it, and we can kind of see, because it's gonna be so fluid in the next, and lots of decisions are gonna be made in March. We're gonna know how we're doing on North timing, we're gonna know on, you know, the bond funds passing. There's just, there's just so many decisions that are, the NTMP is gonna have a recommendation, we're gonna understand what some of maybe those soft costs will be, or those contingency, you know, where our monies are gonna shake out. So, I, I did also just want, I know option two is not an option for me, however, I just wanted to make sure that we, we know that if we only had $20 million, we, we probably could go back and delay this whole project and figure out a way to have a single point of entry and ADA and some renovations for $20 million. We could figure out something. It's just that it will delay us tremendously, and it may not end up being $20 million at the end. Okay, I just wanted to make sure. It's like, it is not an option, because delaying and, and the expense is not the option. So, I just want to make sure that's really clear to everyone. And in that, can we, any other questions? Can we close the discussion? So, we're gonna close the discussion, and we will reconvene on Monday at four o'clock to have a board action here at the, what do we call this room? City Council Chambers, four o'clock, if there is anyone in the public that wants to come in and speak. Thank you very much for your time and your effort and your, and the late night. We appreciate it. And your, your construction team is doing an amazing job, and it's been really great to work with Nathan, and, yes, thank you. Moving on. So, the next Superintendent Board and Board Discussion is on R-19/20 Decision Insight Presentation on Enrollment Projections and Trends. Superintendent Escalante.
Hi, welcome to our, well, just, a lot has happened in the last year. Decision Insight was bought out by a new company, which I apologize, I don't, Jason, what's the name of your new, the company that bought-
Who Knew It.
Who, what?
Who Knew It.
Who Knew It. Okay, that's like the HBO show Silicon Valley. I feel like it's like a offshoot, do you watch that show?
I do not.
Oh, come on.
Sorry.
Okay. Jason, welcome.
Thank you.
Tell me how to pronounce your last name.
Miracle.
That's what I thought, but I, but it just seemed too easy. Jason is our, is now here representing the company. Dean retired. We had Dean for a number of years. He was our December visitor, and so, welcome. And I had a nice chance to speak with Jason on the phone, and we talked through what was going on in the district, and familiarized him a little bit about our wackiness with our, our trends and, and as, and how that has impacted our size. So, Jason, welcome. We've got copies of your presentation here, so, thank you.
All right, thank you for having me. All right, so, let's begin here. So, there's gonna be three sections to the presentation here tonight. First, we're gonna go over some basic demographic data and trends for your district area, look at the historical enrollment, and then the enrollment forecast that we projected for this year for the 10-year future going forward. So, real quickly, I'm just gonna kind of buzz through these. You have them in front of you to go into depth later. But population trends for your area, you can see projected growth going out for both the overall population, households and families into the foreseeable future. School-aged children, going back to when the census was in 2010. Here, you can see the breakdown by ages five to nine, 10 to 14, and up into the high school. You see the population total versus what the district's K through eight enrollment was, and so, they get kind of a sense of the percent served, both for the census date, the current year, and then obviously, we have projected numbers for the future. We won't know the K enrollment, an actual on that, obviously, until we get there. Adult, level, level of adult education, just some information here. You'll note that for your district compared with the state overall, kind of higher levels of upper-level education, bachelor degrees and professional degrees making up about 70-some-odd percent of the adult level of education here, compared with something about 32% statewide. So, that's interesting to know. Overall employment, broken down between blue and white collar, again, comparing your district to the state average, higher on the white collar than the blue collar. Racial and ethnicity, broken out here. You can see that the majority of the demographics here is white, about 80%, with the other 20% being made up of other ethnic groups. Similar pattern here with primary language, about 90% is English only spoken at home, the remaining 10% being other languages. Real quickly here, single-parent families, again, this is comparing your district area geographically with the state, statewide numbers. As you can see, a little bit higher on the married couples, your area to the state, and lower on the single parent as compared to the state as a whole. Any questions about kind of the brief demographics there? It's just kind of informational.
Anyone have any questions? Maggie? Stephen? I just had one question. Do we add in, on your slide, school-aged children? Do we add age five to nine plus age 10 to 14? So, that is the total, or?
Uh, yes, yes.
So, in 2019, there are like 2,400 age-five-to-14-year-olds in Hermosa Beach. Is that how I read that?
I'm sorry, say that again?
In 2019, there's approximately like 2,400, 2,500?
Yeah, 2,500, yeah. Yeah, I'm sorry. The population total there is adding the elementary and kind of middle-aged kids, which would be roughly the, the right age group for your K through eight.
I'm just looking at how it's growing. Thank you.
Sure. Okay, moving on to the historical enrollment analysis, so this is gonna be looking at now not just the general demographics, but your actual enrollment history for the district. So, looking first at a four-year history change, and again, so this is gonna be comparing where we were at to where you were at in 2016, going forward the four years to the current year in 2019. These are all gonna be comparing data that we received in the fall of that year, so a couple, about maybe a month or so into the start, past the start of school. So, we see kindergarten and comparing those has increased 127%. Taking the aggregate of kindergarten and through fifth grade, a little bit of a decline at 97%. The middle school range of six to eight stayed pretty stable at 100. Overall, the district K through eight is a 98% change over the last four years. Overall, the district K through eight is a 98% change over the last four years. Moving on, the annual change impact. So this is going to be showing each year the difference from year to year now. So we had like a four-year jump previously. Now we're going to look at each individual year going from one to the next. So from 16 into 17, kindergarten had 116% change. The following year it had a decline, only 94%, and then bounced back to the 116. So you can see a very kind of erratic, up and down kind of pattern there in the kindergarten enrollment. The next role I wanted to take a look at, this is going to be referring to your exiting cohort, the eighth grade that's exited in one year, and how it's being replaced the following year in kindergarten. Okay? So in 2016, you had a, if you had a hundred kindergarten, I'm sorry, 108th graders exit in 2016, you only replace that by 65 kindergartners incoming in 2017, hence the 65% there. And so the following year was 70%, and the following year after that, this year was 88% replacement as far as the outgoing cohort versus the incoming kindergarten cohort. As a total, K through eight, year to year, 16 to 17, we saw 99%. Same thing again in 18, and a little bit of a bump this year to 101% over last year. Next thing we're going to take a look at here is just each cohort as they age through. You'll note that each cohort does get a net positive or, or stable. There's no cohort change over the past three years as an average that has shown losses. And there are a number, there are four of them that are three percent or better as designated by the plus signs, and then anything that is five percent or higher has the significant marking in that last column there. So we have a couple, mainly your incoming cohorts, or your K moving up to one and five moving up to six, so kind of that entry level into first grade, and then moving from elementary into middle school, you're seeing the most gains. Now we're going to take a look at the overall enrollment history going back about 11 years here. For our projection purposes, we do focus on the most recent four years. So we're looking at the four-year trends, so 16 to, 16 to 19. But just a couple of observations here overall. If we look down at the bottom, the total row, you'll see you're in the mid-twelves, about 11 years ago, peaked in 2014 at about 1479, and since then has been kind of slowly declining with this first year, 2019, actually being the first growth year since 2014, since kind of that peak.
I just, just to interrupt you. Superintendent Escalante, I'm wondering for, just as a way to preserve institutional knowledge on this, next time we do one of these, if we can do benchmarks from like even with the start of, opening of Valley School. So looking at just kind of the, so we have as a point of reference that the district was at 800 and then went to 1400, you know, a decade later. I think just as a way to show, since these things become public record, how much the district has grown and fluxed. If there's some sort of bookmark to put into like when we look, when we look at enrollment history, like I think it's, I, I love that we're just focusing on the past three years right now, especially in these, this first section of the report. I know previously we've had to use this to justify some of the decisions the, the board has made specifically around Measure S. So I am wondering if there is a way for future boards as, as we institutionalize this report, since we're now in our, I think our sixth year of using this, and I think it's, it's a good habit. But if we bookmark this enrollment history with the notes of like, we have significant ebbs and flows of our student population gone. So if there is like a bookmark, maybe if it's every 10 years back, just as a way for like the public to see what Hermosa has done in terms of growth of, of families and students.
Okay, yeah, I'll scrub our records. We're not, we don't have really concise records past the nineties, the early nineties, so with regards to enrollment, but let me scrub the minutes and it'll be a bit of a project, but we'll see what we can pull out.
And I can send you some stuff. I have it from the eighties.
From where?
The eighties.
Oh, great, good. I'll scrub you. That sounded wrong. I mean, you know, data-wise. Get a life, people.
Moving on. It is fun. Here we're just taking a quick look at your students plotted on a map. Our main technology is, is geocentric, so we take all the, the information provided by the districts and plot those kids, so we can see where they're coming from and where they're going. It's kind of the core of, of our application and how our projection methodology does work. So this is just a quick view. You could see, there's a couple dots falling outside the district, but most of the kids that attend the district do live inside the border for the district. So a real quick summary of historical trends and some of the observations we made in the kindergarten. Again, it was, as we saw over the past few years, very erratic, significant swings going both up and down, which of course makes that kind of difficult to project going forward. Cohort changes, specifically the K to one cohort, K to first grade cohort change has been a bit erratic, whereas the other cohorts have been a lot more stable with an occasional outlier year that's maybe a little bit bigger swing. Overall, the district enrollment, 2019, as I mentioned earlier, has been the first growth year since 2014, so that's been four years of previous decline, not major decline, but it has been declining for four years, and this is the first year of uptick since that peak that we see in the history we have here in, in 2014. Are there any questions on the history?
Something that, that decline over the past four years is directly related to us moving to a half-day kindergarten program, just for a frame of reference. Thanks.
Any other questions on that? Okay, so let's move on to our enrollment forecast for this year. So just want to review really quickly some of the factors that influence future enrollment and part of our methodology. The primary factors include kindergarten, what's happening there. Kindergarten kind of is the driver, or is the driver of all forecasts. Whatever happens there tends to then be the starting point that matriculates on through and creates your cohorts as they go on and aggregate. Next thing there, the aging of the grade cohorts through the system. Impact of any new residential development, which I don't think your district really has any new housing going on inside it. And then any sort of inter-district transfers, which as we saw on the student plotted map, not a whole lot of kids coming in from outside the district. So the main things for you is going to be what's happening in kindergarten and what is happening as those cohorts age through. Other factors that can influence would be the private or the charter school enrollment, the housing market. Again, you don't really have any new housing, but there may be some economic things that happen that would draw families or cause families to leave that can affect things. And then anomalous events such as fires, business closures. I think it was talked about earlier in this meeting, some of the stuff that's gone up in Northern California, the fires there, we have some clients that have had some impacts from stuff like that. So let's take a look really quick now at the conservative five-year projection.
Jason, can I add one thing here? The primary factors influencing the calculations, just for the board's information and also for the public, we do, you're correct, we do not have a planned new residential development, but we have an extreme amount of development going on where single-family homes, the old bungalows are being torn down, and multi-unit residences are being constructed. It may be why we're up 17 students since just the beginning of the school year, which is a pretty big swing in these, this number range. So just, just clarifying, adding a little color commentary here.
Yes, there's a lot of context that you know that is not relevant or not apparent in the data, I should say. So here's the five-year projection that we, or that we provide a whole 10-year projection. We limited to five years here in the presentation for this particular chart. So we can see the first historical year, we only show the one historical year again, just so it's easier to see here. And so the first projected year of 2020, we're showing a slight decline, 1.3%, followed by another year of decline, and then a bit of an increase, then a couple more years of just very slight decline. So your district is fairly small to where a handful of kids can equal a half or one percent. So, you know, sometimes these percents look bigger than they may be in terms of actual, actual kids compared to some of our other clients, for example. One of the main factors that does drive the first two years of decline, if you'll notice, your exiting eighth-grade cohorts for this year, 2019, and the projected year of, of 2020, they are in the 170s. And so those are fairly large cohorts. As you look across the rest of the numbers, in fact, those are the largest cohorts you're going to find on those, on the chart. And so as those large cohorts exit out over the next couple of years and are replaced with the smaller ones, we, we projected coming in around the one, mid 120s, kind of taking in the, the average of the past few years and how it's kind of ebbed and flowed, kind of just split the difference. So you can see as we graduate the larger cohorts and they are replaced with smaller cohorts, even though those cohorts over time are gaining, you have a smaller starting point from which those gains are being made. And so as that aggregates through over time and adds up, we're actually seeing some slight declines or about some evenness across the five-year projection here. Here's just a chart now of the district projection going out the full 10 years. So as you can see, relatively stable to showing some slight decline over that time. Now looking at the five-year enrollment trend by level. Kindergarten, we're expecting to be about 124 as, as an actual number in five years. That's a change of 94% from this current year. K through five, the number is eight, aggregating those sixth grades, that is eight thirty-nine, so a change of 101% from this current year. Again, the middle school, six eight, we have it 438, a change of 88%. And then district-wide, 1277, a change of 96%. So you'll note that the middle school is showing the largest decline, and that again goes back to the fact that we have a lot of these larger cohorts that are matriculating, that when you go back in time, they were larger, you know, X number of years ago, and as they kind of start to exit, being replaced by lower, smaller cohorts, I should say. That's what's kind of driving that decline for those specific grades over this time period. Breaking it down now by a school level, here's the projection for the elementary school. And then we have a similar one here for the middle school, as a line graph going out over the 10-year period there. This next one can be a little tricky to read. Always requires a bit of explanation. So the red line is where the counts are at currently for each grade. So if you look kind of vertically, let's start with K, that red dot would be your current K number, and then the five-year number would be the blue dot, and then a 10-year number would be the green dot. So you can see as, as we go kind of forward, some are kind of inverting. You see, use of K looks like it's going to be declining over the, over the 10-year period, whereas first grade is actually going to be winding up a little bit higher over the five and 10-year period than where it sits right now, is, is just a solid number. So general conclusions about the enrollment forecast for this year. As far as kindergarten, we're predicting a decline in first, in the first year. That's a result just of the erratic, erratic historical K, and we're showing just a slight decline going out into the future. For cohort changes, K through one cohort changes focus really more on the two recent years. It's been a more erratic in the past history. The other cohorts changes continue to be relatively stable. So for a district enrollment overall, the projected annual decreases are relatively small, from about point four to, to negative, from a decrease of point four to 1.5, driven again primarily by the rollover loss from the larger eighth grades exiting as in being replaced by smaller kindergarten cohorts. Any questions on that before we kind of look at the individual schools? Okay, so really quick, we've, we've shown this before, so we wanted to include it again. Here are the breakdown of the projections for each of the individual schools. So for Hermosa View, TK through three, showing this here. Again, now, now we're going to see the four-year history along with the full 10-year projection, so you can see that for each of the schools. So you can see in the history year, we had a 16 to 17, a bit of an increase, and then kind of some smaller decreases the last couple of years. And so just projecting that out and watching the cohorts matriculate through, you can see our projection over time, couple of years of decreasing. We do get a year of increase and then some more decline over, over time for that school. For the Hermosa Valley, four five, again, similar thing here. This one, they had a couple of significant declines in 17 and 18, again, mainly driven by those larger cohorts exiting and being replaced by smaller incoming cohorts. And then it's kind of some stability that came in there. So for our projection, just kind of following that pattern, as cohorts are aging through, you get kind of some bumps and increases. And again, percentage-wise, being on the smaller side of the, of a district, they, they may appear bigger than they actually are. Hermosa Valley, K through, I'm sorry, six eight, again, a year of loss and then two years of gain, and so us doing the projection out into the future for that over time. Any questions?
Anyone have any questions? Doug?
Yeah, I have a question. First, thank you for coming out and putting together the, the presentation. As we've been discussing, there's going to be a lot of change coming up over the next few years around the school sites and full-day kindergarten and things like that. This may be a question for the superintendent, not necessarily you. How will those start to be reflected in these projections? I know you kind of have to go on what you have now, but as these changes start to come in, how will that start and when will that start to be reflected here?
I, I think that's really for you, Jason. I, I don't know how the, you know, your algorithms or how you would capture that, but we are going to have two years of real blip in terms of which kids are, which grade levels are going to which schools, we're closing. I mean, it's going to be a, a change, but it's just temporary for a couple of years. So we'll have to talk it through and see with, I'll just give, I'll feed you the, the data and you're going to have to, you know, work it out, I guess. That, I wouldn't be able to do that, but Jason here could.
Yeah.
Yeah, just to, just to speak to that a little bit. I mean, obviously, the main thing that we're looking at is just what is a historical trend? Those are real, those are actual. Anything beyond that is kind of getting into some subjective, some subjectivism. And so if there's going to be things like one-off years, communicating with the district and understanding what the changes are going to be, how long they're going to be, and estimated impact, that's helpful for us to roll into future forecasts. Obviously, things become the most clearest once we have kind of a solid year that's, that's, that once the changes are done, that's when you kind of, you can actually have something you can hang your hat on, if you will. So aside from that, you know, the, we take what we see historically, we take kind of the anecdotal stuff that we get in working and talking with the district and trying to understand as best as we can what they're doing, why they're doing it, what their expectation impact is, and we can model that into the projections.
I have a comment off that, because my guess is for the model, though, we could build in from when we did have inter-district transfers, and we probably have historical data when we allowed for inter-district transfer numbers, and so we could start to build that into a projected future model. And then additionally, looking at if a potential opening for a pre-K and then gathering the historical data of what's pre-K right now. And then the last data point would be looking at the growth of the private school enrollment, and you can see that with the, the current enrollment trend right now versus the overall child enrollment on whatever that school-aged children sheet is. So we've lost a significant amount of, of K enrollment based off of what the current population is. Those are three data points I can see in a projected future model post 2023.
Are you, are you saying TK or pre-K?
Uh, pre-K.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Barb, any questions?
No, I have none. I'm a numbers person. I love this stuff.
Stephen?
Is there any modeling of similar districts or sizes that is showing new improvements to facilities and the lift that that can give or, or changes? Do you track that?
That's, that's really.
Like we, the hypothesis that you build beautiful new facilities and then more people are going to want to go to them, so, but I just wonder if that's.
That's, that's hard to quantify specifically. Obviously, it varies district to district. There's a whole lot of other factors that go in, just, other than just, we, we modernize the school. Typically, yes, there is a bump because parents want to send their kids to something that's newer and stuff like that, but there's a whole host of other factors that would make that kind of hard to quantify.
Got that. And are there any other beach cities or neighboring cities in similar trends? I mean, is there, I don't know if you, your organization does Manhattan Beach or Redona Beach or any of those sort of communities?
Not off the top of my head. We do, we have a lot of other clients in the area. Torrance is one. I don't know about any. And kind of your size and kind of.
We're pretty, yeah, it, it was pretty unique in that regard, so, anyway, I was just curious. Thank you.
Yeah, this is less of a comment for you, but just more for a comment for us is just to think about, you know, the population that we, the low-hanging fruit that potentially we have here in a couple of years when we have buildings that are finalized and, you know, if there's this population that we're not getting to come to Hermosa schools currently that we can start marketing to and, you know, really showing off our schools. Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you.
It's helpful. Are there any further questions? Seeing none, we are going to move on to the next superintendent board report and board discussion on R-2019/20 on the Measure S facilities program update. Superintendent Escalante.
Oh, so, thank you. So the Measure S update is while we discussed options for view. And then I think I already touched on the MOU. And I guess the only other thing is construction at North is moving along. We do have a bit of a delay based on the weather and that unexpected discovery of asbestos wrapping on the pipes. But we're in, we have weekly meetings and we're monitoring the schedule and making sure that we're trying to do everything we can to stay, to stay on track. I appreciated your comments, President Cole, about the construction company. They've been doing a great job of communicating back out to the city and to the residents. And that really helps everyone when they have a better understanding of what's going on. It's been, I think, fun and scary and interesting for the neighbors to be able to look out across that property for the first time since 1924. And so, you know, the neighborhood is changing. And we're really excited to get the grading done and then start to get some of those foundations and footings in. Thank you, Nancy. And that's, I think, probably, unless you have any questions, I think that's it.
Clarification, groundbreaking actually happens after the site is graded, right? We've been talking about groundbreaking from the demolition, but groundbreaking still is to come.
We haven't formalized a groundbreaking, but we can if the board is interested in doing that.
So I guess two questions. One's a clarification on like the word, like groundbreaking happens next. It hasn't happened yet.
Groundbreaking, I'm sorry, are you talking about ceremonially? Or do you mean in terms of starting construction, the work?
Yes, yeah, ceremonial.
Ceremony?
It usually happens after the site's been graded, right?
It's an option. I mean, you can-
I know it's not, it's like, but I'm just saying, ceremonial groundbreaking is what happens.
But there's a groundbreaking where everyone has a shovel and whatever. And then you have your ribbon cutting at the end, where everyone has the scissors. So it's, neither one is a requirement. It's up to the board's preference. We could do a groundbreaking probably after we're done with the paleontologists and the archaeologists who are on site now for the grading.
And so timetable on that is two weeks, four weeks, six weeks, eight weeks?
Oh, we're in December. January sometime?
You have to go to your mic.
Grading will start on the 17th, and then it's approximately four weeks, four to five weeks for the grading. And then we'll hit ground, groundbreaking, if you will.
Yeah. But we would need some direction on that sooner rather than later, if that is something that the board would like to do so that we can alert the construction company and coordinate that.
Maggie, did you have a comment on that? A feeling one way or the other, an opinion?
My comment is in favor of doing a groundbreaking to recognize this. I think this is the largest significant public works project in the recent history for Hermosa Beach. And I think it's something to celebrate and acknowledge Hermosa Beach's history. This has been a long public process. And I think it's an opportunity to kind of christen the ground in a really positive way that shows all the hard work and communications that have gone on over the site.
Thank you. Doug?
I could go either way. I know the superintendent and I have discussed this a bit, or in my time as the president. We opted not to do it at that time, not to kind of, you know, we wanted to focus on getting going and things like that. But, you know, if the board is open to it at this time, I don't have any issue with that. I guess might be the best way to put it.
Barb?
I thought there were some issues with liability also, having people that were not construction workers on the site. I thought that was discussed also.
That's why we would have to bring the construction company into it in terms of the planning. And I would, I would need to find out more about it. You can give me direction in January, I think at the January meeting, which is on the 8th. That would be plenty of time for us to put it on the agenda. And you can give some direction about what you would like to do regarding groundbreaking ceremony.
Great. Anybody else have any comment about that? Yep, Stephen?
I totally respect my members' sort of point on the magnitude of this, which I totally agree is fantastic. But I, if it takes an hour away from staff, planning, a half, you know, half a day to be on the site, like I just want to keep going. And so I don't want to hold anything up. I think there's also some sensitivities I'm hearing from community in terms of people are still getting over it a little bit. You know, the emotions and tied to the former site. My only, so my recommendation would be to go with the ribbon cutting and make a bigger thing around that once we're there and we've got the physical building. There may be, I do have, I think there's a visualization of things. We're seeing these great renderings and things like that and just making sure that they're on our site and we're celebrating the positive stuff that's coming. The other thing I would just maybe ask the board to consider is, is at what stage do we switch gears and stop calling, you know, is there the consideration, stop calling it North? Because it's no longer that North site, it's a new site. And I think we've, you know, we've heard Vista, we've heard other things sort of put out there. And I think that maybe there's an opportunity to, you know, call it something new. I don't know if that comes at the ribbon cutting or whatever else, but what the decision on that needs to be. So that's my only thoughts.
Great, so we can agree that on the next board meeting between now and then, we can add it to an agenda item? Or do we need to give you direction?
The ground, no, it's not on the agenda tonight, so we'll agendize it. And you can take action on whether or not you'd like to have a groundbreaking. We'll do that in January, January 8th.
Is everyone okay with that? Great, thanks. We'll move on to consent. Do I have a motion to approve the items on the consent calendar?
I move to approve the items on the consent calendar.
Is there a second?
A second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? So the motion carries, the consent calendar is approved. Now we'll move on to board action. We'll start with Superintendent S-2319/20 on the discussion slash action on professional development budget for the Board of Education. Superintendent Escalante.
President Cole, may I make a motion to extend the meeting time by 30 minutes?
Yes, you may make the motion. Do I have a second?
30.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Extend the meeting until 10:30. Thank you, Maggie. Superintendent Escalante.
Yes, this is an item to discuss and/or take action on professional development budget for the Board of Education. So the Board obviously is comprised of elected members of our community and you provide governance for our schools. To meet the expectations of fulfilling your position, members of the Board are encouraged to participate in professional development opportunities. And the Ed Code states in any school where the average daily attendance for the prior year was 10,000 or less, but more than 1,000, each member of the City Board of Education or governing board of the district who actually attends all meetings held may receive, as compensation for his or her services, a sum not to exceed $240 in any month. Since the early 2000s, Hermosa Beach City School District Board of Education has taken action to waive the receipt of compensation per Ed Code 35120 in the amount of approximately $14,400 per year. Below is a chart of the Board of Education professional developments funding and the amount expended. And this chart indicates from 2015 to the current school year, a budget that has wavered between 2,000, from $2,000 to $3,500. And the expenditures have exceeded the budgeted amount in three of the five years. It's recommended that the Board determine an appropriate amount to continue maintaining a line item for the funding of the professional development for members of the Board in lieu of compensation, but not to exceed $14,400 each year. Funding for the Board Education professional development will be allotted from the general fund.
Does anyone have any questions for the superintendent?
Superintendent Escalante, could you clarify about how much CSVA fees cost every year? And is that the main source of our PD that we've previously taken?
Yes, yes, it is. So they, this year, at the just, the conference we just had, it's a three-day conference. It's an all-in conference, three-day price was $550 approximately, depending on, there's an early bird special or whatever. But if you're late, then it's an additional $250. So the total could be $800 depending on when you register. There's also an additional $200 for a board workshop, board president workshop. But you don't have to join the conference in order to attend that. So that can be about a $200 item, individual item. Or it can be packaged with a three-day program that brings you up to about $750. That's just for registration. And then, of course, depending on, different board members have different schedules. And so sometimes there's hotels involved, hotels, there's meals that are included in the conference. But then there are also meals that there would be reimbursement for. So I would say that generously, it would be about an $800 to $1,000 per board member for the conference, which is held annually. Is it annually or biannually?
It's annually and delegates go biannually. Next year's is Anaheim.
Oh, it is, it's not in San Francisco. Okay.
I just add one more thing in there. We don't have any recent board members who have attended CSVAs, like extra meetings that they've done in terms of their special conferences that they host.
Not to my knowledge, no.
Doug, have any questions?
No, I have no questions.
Have recommendations? Barb? Stephen? Should we make a recommendation based off of this information? I mean, to maybe up it to 5,000, just so we're not always going over it? If we-
Yeah, my, I want, my opinion is we should, I think we need an amount because people do take advantage of going to CSVA. I think it is a worthwhile thing for board members to do. And we should have an allotment to there. If you look over the last four years, it averages about 2,500. So I think that's a, somewhere in that range is a fair amount to put in there. Going forward, I think it will be about there.
Just to point out, year-to-date for 2019-20, we've already expended over $2,700.
Yeah, so I would add a point on that. I think it really depends on how many new board members we have. So especially going forward, like if it's a year where we have three seats up versus two seats and all, those are all three new delegates or three new board members, like it's likely they would attend CSVA, so it'd be an increased amount that year. So you could think about it cyclically.
Yeah, because that would be only every four years that that would be the case.
But it could be, you know, I'm thinking back to like reflecting on Barbara going and her enthusiasm over CSVA. Like I went, I think, each of my first four years because I really appreciated the professional development from it. So I think it just ebbs and flows on where the board is at. I, so my suggestion is actually an increase of 2,500. I think it could go up to five, just because I do think that, right now, the board is stable. Next year, two seats are up, you know, and then after that, there's three seats up after that. So we are looking at a brand-new board. And I think only two of our board members attended the conference this year, right? Well, Jan, yours was just the workshop, right? And have, you've never been, Stephen?
I think 5,000 is a reasonable number for all the reasons you just stated. And you don't want anyone to feel as if they can't attend the conference. They are very, very much worthwhile, so. You're going over the budget anyway in all of these boxes, 4,000, 5,000. It's, everyone is very judicious. I think that the mindset is what's most important in driving this in our district where everyone sacrifices financially and opportunity-wise to make sure that the money is spent on the kids and only at the, at opportunities that have the greatest need. So 4,000, 5,000, you're going to need to bump it up because you're over budget already for this year, for good reasons.
Yeah, no, I agree. I don't have a problem with that. Hey, for a good reason, I agree. I would assume though, most, since we already had the conference, most of the money has already been allocated. So I would, my guess is the 2760, it'd probably go up a little bit because maybe there's some mileage or some other reimbursements that are going to come in. Because it was only last week, but it's not going to be much. But I'm not, I'm not opposed to upping it to four or five.
Well, this is a discussion slash action item. And now that you've had the discussion, there is the option of moving this forward to be continued in the context of the total budget workshop that we're going to be scheduling for January. So that's just another option in your decision-making.
So I just add some more data points in there. Currently, I'm a, so I'm a delegate for the Assembly. One of our action items ups is to re-up for delegate assembly, like that is a fee for travel. So if it's in Sacramento, which it was last year, I don't know if they're going to, I don't know if it's going to be in Sacramento again. They usually cover hotels for the Sacramento piece, but travel up there is a cost. So the part of the, the cost of having a board member as a delegate is that additional fee. The other thing is they do something called Masters in Governance workshops. So I know several board members have expressed interest in those. Those normally go for like, I think, anywhere between 250 to 500 a course. I think they are beneficial, especially as you get further into board service as a way to stay excited about, you know, some of the developments and like how to govern better. So I think there is just a longevity piece around that. So that's where I would advocate for an increased budget off of that.
Anyone have any further comments? Shall we make a motion to, can we, can we make a motion? Or should we continue the discussion?
I move to set an annual budget for $5,000.
Do I have a second?
I second.
All in favor? All opposed?
Aye.
The motion-
Nay, I guess, sorry.
The motion carries. So we have four ayes and one nay. And the motion carries that we increase our budget to $5,000 for professional development for the discussion slash action on professional development budget for Board of Education.
For 2021, yeah.
For 2021. All right, moving on. Next, Superintendent S-24-19/20 regarding the Board of Education compensation.
Yes, thank you. It's recommended that the Board discuss and take action to waive or receive monthly compensation as provided by law. In the last item, I read to you what the Board is entitled in terms of compensation for those members who actually attend all board, all meetings held, may receive compensation for his or her services, a sum not to exceed $240 in any month. The Board, our Board policy, 9250, states that each member of the Board may receive a monthly compensation not to exceed the amount provided by law, which is what I just stated. However, Board members are not required to accept payment for meetings attended. Members of the Board may participate in the health and welfare benefit program provided to the district employees. And Board members who elect to participate shall pay the full cost of the premiums. The fiscal implications is a potential, a waiver would be a potential general fund savings of $14,400.
Are there any questions for the superintendent? Doug? Barb? Maggie? Stephen? Do I have a motion?
I will make a motion that the Board of Education waive the monetary compensation provided by law, Education Code 35120.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries. Moving on to, uh, Agenda Item sixteen, it's the S dash twenty-five nineteen slash twenty, which is the last thing on the Superintendent's Board Actions, California School Board Association Delegate Assembly nominations.
Yes, it suggested, um, or actually recommended that the Board nominate, um, candidates to serve on the twenty-twenty California School Board Association Delegate Assembly. Each year, Board members select representatives to the School Boards Association Delegate Assembly. The Assembly is a vital link in the Association's governance and sets the general policy direction. Working with the Board members, the Board of Directors and Executive Committee, delegates ensure that the Association promotes interests of California's, um, school districts and county offices of education. The CSBA's mission is to provide leadership in setting and implementing the public education agenda and to support school board governance at the district and county levels. Elected delegates serve a two-year term beginning April first, twenty-twenty, through March thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two. There are two required Delegate Assembly meetings each year. In twenty-twenty, the dates are May sixteen in Sacramento and December, um, two through, second and third in Anaheim. All nominations for the twenty-twenty California School Board Association Delegate Assembly must be postmarked by January seventh, twenty-twenty. Um, Maggie is currently a Delegate Assembly member, and our district is, um, should be very proud of her and her contributions to this process. She, uh, when I was there last week, there were a number of people who came up to me and said, "Oh, you're from Hermosa Beach? I know Maggie." And, um, she's, she's a real strong leader, um, and, um, and I was very, very proud that she's a member of our Board. And, um, so if, um, so I don't know where we go from here. You're still on, right?
So I'm on. I need, uh, to be nominated, uh, to submit my application to the Regional Delegate Assembly.
Is the Regional Delegate?
So when the Board needs to nominate me as one of the candidates, and then my candidate petition goes forth.
Okay.
So do I have a motion to nominate Maggie Bové La Monica for the California School Board Association Delegate Assembly? Or question? Should we start with questions? Any questions, anyone? Do I have a motion?
She's up to doing it. Then I will make a motion to nominate her for the, Maggie Bové La Monica for the Regional Delegate Assembly.
Do I have a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Great, the motion carries. Maggie, go forth and lead the California School Board Association Delegate Assembly. Uh, moving on to business, uh, the Business of Board Action, the Business Board Action? Is that how you call it? Uh, B dash fifty-six nineteen slash twenty, the First Interim Report for nineteen-twenty, uh, Ms. Montalvo.
Okay. Um, it is recommended that the Board of Education of the Hermosa Beach City Dis- School District approve the First Interim Port- Report for the two thousand nineteen-twenty year and certify the district will be able to meet its financial obligations for the remainder of the fiscal year.
You gonna do it?
Yeah. Okay. Um, the First Interim is just a snapshot of the district financials between, um, July one and October thirty-first. We're, take a look at where we've been and where we're at and where we're going. In September, we looked at our unaudited actuals, and, uh, tonight, we're looking at the First Interim Report. In January, we'll be reviewing the audit report. Um, interestingly enough, I put a few slides in, um, about our historical enrollment, um, pretty close to what, um, Jason from Decision Insight. Um, so currently, our projected enrollment for our base year is thirteen sixty-five. Our actual enrollment today is thirteen sixty-three. As Pat mentioned, we have an increase of about seventeen students from June till, um, now. Um, and I've also projected the following two years out, that there will be a decline in enrollment, and that is because of the large, um, seventh and eighth-grade cohorts that will be moving out and smaller cohorts coming in. Um, we should turn a corner once View School has closed, and, um, those numbers will begin to climb again. Um, our ADA, our Average Daily Attendance, um, in our current base year, the projection is one thousand three hundred and sixteen average daily attendance. Last year, as you know, our, um, ADA was one thousand two hundred and ninety-five. And again, it's projected to decline in the two out years. I do wanna mention that our, um, absence rate is currently three point eight-nine percent, which is higher than it was last year at this time. Last year, it was three point seven-one. So we do have an opportunity right now to recoup some of that by asking our parents to send their students to school every day now until, um, winter break, so that all students are in the seat, because we know that's how we earn our LCFF funding. LCFF funding is, um, based on students in the seats, our average daily attendance. And of course, the district is going to continue to monitor this, um, on a monthly basis. Um, the next slide is our Average Daily Attendance by Grade Span. Um, it's pretty consistent with what Jason was saying. The top line is TK through third grade, pretty steady there. Um, four through six in the, in the middle is also pretty steady. In, uh, the seventh and eighth grade is the bottom line, where we do have, show a projection up in the seventh and eighth grade for the current base year, and then a slight decline the following two years, because of smaller cohorts in that, those grade levels. So overall, we've had a increase of enrollment about one percent. Um, our general fund resources, our total funding, um, we're looking at thirteen point eight million this year. Um, our LCFF funding is seventy-eight percent, or ten point eight million. We have fourteen percent in local funding, six percent in state funding, while we get two percent in our federal funding. Moving on to our general fund expenditures, our total expenditures are projected to be fourteen point four million. Um, looking at the chart, you can see the largest chunk of our expenditures is salary and benefits, which make up about eighty-three percent of our expenditures, which for salary and benefits, that's about twelve million dollars. Conversely, if you look at, um, that twelve million dollars in regards to our revenue, it's eighty-seven percent of our revenue is spent on salary and benefits, while we're only bringing in ten point eight million in our LCFF funding. So the cost differential, or the delta, is about one point two million. Our LCFF funding is not even paying for our salary and benefits. Um, however, through the ongoing support of, um, the community and the Hermosa Beach Education Foundation, Beach Cities, um, HVPTO, Kiwanis, and the community at large, the district is able to continue to fund programs. Um, let's take a quick look at our comparison from budget adoption to first interim. Um, as you can see, due to our increased enrollment, we have an opportunity to, um, collect another hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars. We've had a slight decrease in federal funding due to a, a Title II decline. We're showing an increase in other state funding, which is our, um, second apportionment for the low-performing, uh, student block grant. So that brings our total revenue to about thirteen point eight million. We take a look at expenditures. Um, we're showing a decrease in certificated salaries, which is due to, um, one teacher being removed from the budget. We had an extra teacher in the budget. We didn't know where first-grade enrollment was, so we had an extra teacher in there. That teacher has been removed. Um, there was some movement in the twenty percent assignments, extra twenty percent assignments went, were assigned to different staff members, so there was some cost savings and differential there. And then, um, uh, in addition to that, we also increased our certificated substitute budget because of, um, current staff members exercising their right to maternity and parental leave during this timeframe, so we've increased the budget to, to cover that cost. But overall, for certificated salaries, it, it still is a, a decrease of eighty-one hundred dollars. Um, our classified salaries have increased by fifty-five thousand, and that's for, um, EDP staffing to, um, move the program forward with the Board directives and, um, follow the guidelines set forth in, um, implementing the fifteen-to-one ratio. So we have a decrease next in, um, our one-time money expenditures, carryover one-time money. So from budget to, um, first interim, the accounts are reconciled. You project how much money you're gonna have left over at the end of one year into the next year's budget, 'cause the books aren't closed. So we over-projected, so now I have to, um, decrease those funds to the actual number that we have left for professional development and technology budget. So those, um, decreases are reflected in services and other operating expenditures and capital outlay. Um, so the projected, uh, deficit for first interim is about six hundred and forty-three thousand dollars. Next, we can take a quick look at our extended day program. Um, just some information about enrollment. Um, over the summer, in August, our enrollment was, um, at one sixty-four. When school started, the enrollment was at one forty-six, and our current enrollment is at one thirty-nine. Um, the budget, um, from the first interim is on the left-hand column, while our actuals are on the, at the firsthand, um, right-hand column. So it looks for, looks like for expenditures and revenue, we're on target to, for EDP to be a self-supporting, um, program at this time. Okay. Um, so just to recap, changes from, uh, budget adoption to the first interim, we've had projected enrollment and ADA have increased. We've had a slight decrease in federal funding. Changes to expenditures, certificated salaries decreased, while substitute teacher salaries increased and classified salaries increased. I also wanna, um, mention right now that during second interim, the, um, substitute teacher salaries will also increase again. We have additional employees that will be exercising their right, um, during that timeframe to take maternity and parental leaves. So that will be added at second interim. Uh, maintaining the reserve is always important, and cash is king, as we all know. If you have it, that's great, um, and we wanna keep as much of it as we can. So our beginning balance is, uh, three point nine million. Our projected ending balance is three point three million. Um, we have the assignments within the reserve, as you can see there. Um, our reserve for economic uncertainties is about one point seven million, which represents about one and a half months of salary and benefit expenditures. So the next slide just shows, um, a picture of the assignments within the reserve, while fifty-four percent of our reserve is re- uh, for, reserved for economic uncertainties. Thirty-nine percent is for the gas fee, four percent is unused vacation, two percent is for the audit adjustment, and one percent is for the technology support. Our other funds, which consist of Fund Thirteen, Fund Twenty-one, Fund Twenty-five, and Fund Forty are all operating consistently within the adopted budget. As Doug mentioned previously, we did get our additional funding for, um, our Series B bonds is now reflected in that ending balance. Um, ongoing concerns moving forward. Increasing STIRS and PERS costs, increases in health and welfare, future negotiated settlements with the bargaining units, maintenance and facilities, technology infrastructure, technology for students, textbooks and instructional materials, diminishing reserves, diminishing increases to state funding through LCFF. So that concludes, um, the first interim presentation. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Paula. Anyone have any questions? Doug?
Thank you, Paula, for putting this all together, once again.
Barb? Maggie? Steven?
Just a clarification on the technology line items, um, moving forwards, I mean, the planning. I think we talked about the, um, it's not currently in the budget or plan for this year, but moving forwards, we're gonna, as part of the planning, figure that out, correct?
So there are some technology lines in the budget for, um, repairs and, and that type of thing, and, um, technology as it's referred to, like, our, um, security system, that the, the, anything that has touches students is included in there, like, our power school registration, our power school, um, those types of things. But there is not a line item for technology infrastructure and technology for students on an ongoing basis. So I think that's something that we'll, um, need to look at in depth in the January workshop.
Correct. Thank you.
I don't have any questions either. Thank you for putting this together, and I just wanna compliment you just, I know it's been a, how ma- has it been a year you've been in this job, or a year and a half? A year. So, you know, it's just, you're owning it, you know? It's like, we miss you, Angela, but got Paula. She's doing great. Um, so do we have a, a motion to approve, uh, B dash fifty-seven nineteen slash twenty on the resolution? Sorry, on the First Interim Report for nineteen-twenty?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Um, I need someone to-
I'd like to make a motion to extend the meeting by ten minutes.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that does require us to, to talk quickly. Ten minutes. That's all we got. Now we're on the Board Member Roundtable. Oh, do we do?
Don't forget Stephen Izant.
Sorry. What am I, what am I missing? I'm missing one, sorry. Um, the reappointment of me- oh, sorry. We have one last thing. B dash fifty-seven nineteen slash twenty, Resolution, uh, Number Nine, nineteen slash twenty, Reappointment of Measure S, Citizens Oversight Committee Member for additional team member, additional term, sorry. Ms. Montalvo.
Okay. It is recommended that the Board of Education reappoint one member of the Citizens, Measure S Citizens Oversight Committee, Mr. Stephen Izant, for an additional term. The role of the COC Committee is in oversight capacity and not in a decision-making capacity. The COC members will oversee Measure S bond proceeds, expenditures, and review audit reports. A call for reappointment went out to current members in October and November in two thousand nineteen, and Mr. Stephen Izant stepped up. Um, so I recommend that the member for reappointment, Mr. Stephen Izant, be approved.
Any questions? Concerns? Uh, do we have a motion? To approve?
I will move to approve, uh, B dash fifty-seven dash nineteen twenty, Resolution Number O-nine, colon, nineteen twenty, uh, to reappoint Mr. Stephen Izant for additional term on the Measure S Citizens Oversight Committee.
Thank you, Doug. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Another year. Thank you so much. And last, we have our Board Member Roundtable. Uh, can we start with Doug?
Sure. Um, I just want to, uh, thank everyone for all their support, uh, once again, during my, um, my, my term as Board President. Um, it was a great honor to, to be the Board President, um, lead the Board, um, for the past year, and I thank everybody for all their support along the way. Um, I know Jen will do a terrific job leading us, uh, through this year, and we're all here to support you in any way, uh, that we can. And, uh, yeah, that's what I got. Thank you.
Barb?
Just wanna wish everybody happy holidays, happy peaceful, restful times. Enjoy your family.
You too.
And friends.
Maggie?
Um, we're meeting again on Monday, so-
Oh, I forgot.
We're meeting again on Monday, so I'll save my comments till Monday, except Jen, excited to see you in the presidency. Best of luck. Thank you for all your, your future thoughts and Doug, thank you again.
Great, thanks Maggie. Steven?
Yeah, just a couple of quick, good ones, thank you. I echo that. I'm super excited, Jen, about the presidency and what we've, as a Board are going to do. Yeah, save holiday, sure, but thankful, reasons to be thankful and Thanksgiving recently and whatever else. I think we're, we're moving through a lot of stuff, so that's great. I, there, there were two things that I wanted to just mention in the roundtable. Didn't necessarily cover them as part of, but as part of the Transformation Committee. We've been introduced to a couple of folks and this is purely an FYI. There's no sort of, I think it's interesting. I think it's particularly just being out there and engaging with these tech communities and, and who's, who's doing what and sort of it's interesting perspective as we have been out to other school sites and explored what other people are doing and interesting things. So I just wanted to mention to the Board, we can forward, forward materials afterwards. Or, yeah, I think we can send, send them afterwards rather than sort of presenting anything. But I was introduced to, or we, the district was introduced to a gentleman by the name of Kenneth Shelton. It was by Jennifer Vaden Bath, who is the Program Manager at Google when we were meeting with Google. And she just was like, look, based on everything you're going through and whatever else, this gentleman is all about transformation and particularly consultative and strategy about ed tech. So I thought it would be an interesting connection point. He provided some great insights. It could be for consideration moving forwards. I, I think, you know, depending on our offsite, our governance offsite and particular meetings that we've got coming up in January, February, wherever else, he may be a fresh voice, sort of to help us guide some of those conversations. I know in the past, we've had consultant help sort of, or a person help moderate that session. So it, it could be of interest to us there. I just couldn't, I just put together some of his background for the Board's information. And the other introduction was to a group by the name of New Tech Network, NTN. We happened to meet at the Ed Tech Summit, again hosted by Google at USC. And the interesting thing there, I thought, was just how other organizations are going about. And they're an organization that helped transform districts and organizations and I think it's just interesting to see how they go about it. There's actual additional documentation they had, both in terms of that process and other things, but data points as well, which I think is always good to sort of see. And so I think that there's interesting sort of just approach and methodology and other things. So actually, I want to make sure that, that, that gets sent on. So there's those two things. And I attended Mr. Harrison's, or the music performance. It was spectacular. And I say spectacular because it's like literally just, I mean, you're just seeing how the music program has grown and it's like, you know, literally getting every child up there, even my reluctant son, who doesn't necessarily want to be sort of performing music, but you can see the, the joy it brings and it was a really great performance. So I just wanted to mention that and that's it, thank you.
Thank you, Steven. And I also want to just share the holiday greetings with everyone and the thanks because I know we really support you all at the school site and the staff and just please share our holiday wishes and with them and our appreciation for everything that they do. Every day, we, we, we feel it and we know it. We know how hard of work it is. The other thing I wanted to add was, one of the things we had talked, I had, I had spoke of was finding time to kind of align Board priorities in the coming month and I know we're going to be having a governance workshop in January. And I think, Michelle, there's, it sounds like there's a number of things that are going to be taking our, needing our attention in the new year and I know, I think we might need some extra Board, special sessions, what we'd call them? Special sessions? Workshops, special sessions? So we'd like to, like, just try to find maybe an extra day a month to meet right now for the next four, four or five months probably. So does that seem like what, reasonable? Yeah, so if you can help us to kind of agenda, get those on the agenda, that'd be wonderful. And other than that, we're going, oh, sorry, Pat? Yes, you have one other thing to add, yes?
Very quick. We have some, a very limited number of surplus bricks that have been retrieved from the North School Site. So next Wednesday, December eighteenth, from one to four in the afternoon at the District Office located at the South Park. First come, first served if you would like a brick from the North School. We, we are going to give, there are some bricks that HBEF will be auctioning off at Hearts of Hermosa and there's, and their brick going to the Historical Society. You guys got your bricks. And so I think we're good on the brick distribution. And, but first come, first served and don't call us, just show up and help yourself. Thank you.
Thank you for that. And with that, we will adjourn the meeting. Oh, sorry, do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting? I'm ready to do this.
I'll move to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Oh, with that, we will adjourn the meeting. Let me do this little gavel thing. Great.